We do, we have one, two, three, four, five, six.
Seven, eight.
It's eight.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That is counting me tonight.
I was waiting to give my.
Is this the line number?
Yes.
So, um, so we call the meeting toward about 19th. Commissioner Volusia, can you please take a little call?
Commissioner Garde.
Here. Steve, could you bring these chairs over?
Commissioner Volusia here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dizovis.
Oh, you'd like to thank that.
Commissioner Marsha Lee.
Bring those over.
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Adala. Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Martin, say here. Say here. Commissioner Nidens. Commissioner McNay. Commissioner Lars Tegel. Commissioner Egan.
Present.
Commissioner McKenney. Director Chair, you have the forum.
Thank you. Um, I would like to put into, um, we have the civil service as our, uh, number one on our agenda, and they have given us an updated, um, packet. So their, the first one is a clean copy of their provisions, so we'll need that exhibited one. And then, um, then we have the blue, um, and, uh, strikeout, blue strikeout lines. That will be exhibit number two.
I'm with you.
And we have our wonderful director here to walk us through any additional changes that have been made.
Thank you, Commissioner and Commissioners. Uh, so as we did at a previous meeting, there were a few areas that needed to be either reorganized, change terms from pleasure to discretion, uh, and reorganize the section of what's now, uh, 207. Sorry. I should be reading from the clean version. Um, 207, uh, the unclassified service. So, uh, last time we were here, uh, we did agree that these sections, uh, were kind of out of order, where you had membership, and then you had power to the Commission, and then you created the Personnel Director. So we reorganized that in a linear, more methodical fashion. Uh, again, there was a lot of conversation about the term pleasure. We removed that and added discretion. Um, and we reorganized the positions for appointment for those that are in the unclassified service, uh, by the appointing authority. Other than that, there weren't many other changes. We expanded upon the 60 to 90 days to give City Council more time, uh, when we submit, uh, or the Commission submits to that body. So again, giving the City Council more time to be able to navigate any requests going further. There was a conversation about in section 207, uh, the term or use of unskilled, that's now been changed to routine. And we did spend a lot of time at the end of last session regarding, uh, the military reinstatement language, um, and adding the term reasonably satisfactory, which was added. Uh, we cleaned up the reemployment section, which is, uh, 211, uh, as requested by the Commission here, and we worked it to a more workable, uh, uh, standard, as we spoke about, and then added to, uh, when someone resigns or retires, uh, the importance of evaluating the time when they've been out and making sure that they have maintained, uh, the qualifications, ethics, et cetera, for the position that they're seeking reemployment. Uh, we've also tweaked, uh, two sections, and John, pick that.
Yeah. First one is, um, section 213, test for employer promotion lists. Uh, and I'm looking at the, um.
The blue line version.
What page? So that would be if you go to page 18 of 27. Yes. You see the, you see the focus section there?
Yeah.
So, um, so that whole section talks about, uh, after an exam is given, candidates have, uh, what is called a 30-day review period to make sure that there weren't any errors in scoring. And during that 30 days, if you remember, no one can be appointed off of the list, that, that particular list during that 30-day time period. Um, so, so what this section says is that, um, after the 30 days, the Personnel Director then has the authority to make appointments off of the list. But our charter also gives, uh, for a variety of reasons, candidates the ability to file an appeal for a variety of reasons, but on the exam process itself, in this section, which isn't any differently from what I was here a week ago, a summer ago. It, it says that any appeals authorized under this chapter must be filed for 30 days to the date that the review period ends. So they have to bring the appeal within 30 days when the review period ends. But I thought it was appropriate to add the next section. It says, "Subject to the discretion of the Personnel Director, any appointments from the employment list may be deferred to any resolution of any appeal, which, if, if successful, could alter the rank or onset list in order of appointments." So here's the best example I can give you of a situation where, where Mr. Amato is the Personnel Director. She uses discretion. And let's say we have a list, uh, three candidates on the list, and let's say we have two openings for the position of firing lieutenant as an example. So we're going to, morally, number one and number two on the list would be appointed. But let's say candidate number three filed an appeal. He said something was wrong with, with the exam process. If he was successful in his appeal, he could theoretically move up to number one or two. And so we don't want to appoint numbers one or two now because the appeal of number three could affect their standing on the list. So this gives Mr. Amato the discretion to say, "I'm not going to make any appointments until the appeal is heard," and it gives him discretion. Now, there may be a situation when candidate number 40 on a list files an appeal. But we can make appointments off of your list because even if this appeal is successful, it's not going to affect anything. So, uh, I added that section. I think it's important. And then the only.
Can you stick with that section?
Yes.
I'm trying to approve the chair. Do you also need to stay the certification of the list?
The list?
Or add that appeal? It says a certi- the two-year period runs with certification.
No, we don't, remember Mark, that?
Yes.
We don't certify lists anyways. Two-year period runs when the 30-day review period ends.
Oh, okay. Now, if that's the case, if the 30-day review period ends, and he has discretion, and a lawsuit takes six months to a year, then you're beaten into that two-year list. Shouldn't we, if he has discretion to delay appointments, should he have discretion to delay certification?
No, I don't think so, because I don't think we would. When I'm talking about an appeal, I'm talking about an appeal to the Civil Service Commission, not like an appeal to the.
I don't think they'd go to court after.
If they go to court, the judge is going to order whatever the judge is agreeing to. Agree with the. I wouldn't worry about that.
I thought you might be waiting for a Supreme Court.
No, 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 we wouldn't ever.
Thank you for the introduction.
And then. You know, again, the other issue is. On page 727. This talks about 727, number 21, which is, this is part of a list of those positions of the unclassified service. And 21 talks about all employees of the Bridgeport Public Schools and the Bridgeport Board of Education, except for those appointed through the classified employment process as the founding bodies charter. And then it talks about all teachers and administrators and executive positions to build a city school system that requires certification for the state board and education. And then it says, "Along with the following positions," this is the moot point. I think, I think we should add this. Along with the following positions, which subject to the Bridgewater Collective Board are they may serve at the discretion of the superintendent of schools, and we would list those positions. And when I was looking at this, these are the positions that the superintendent had, should have some discretion over, just like the mayor should have some discretion in some of his high-level appointments. And, and this list, although I think Tommy ought to say something, I'm not just trying to put that. This is what we got from the superintendent's office, the, these, these names, so these positions. So I thought it was appropriate to, to give that discretion to the superintendent of the schools like we give the mayor discretion for those high-level positions. So I, I added that.
And, uh, just to, to add on to it, there are established Bridgeport Board of Education bylaws that mandate the superintendent to seek interviews in Personnel Committee of the Bridgeport, the Board of Ed, for certain high-level classifications.
So that, that's, that's all the additions. And I think, as Eric pointed out, all the changes that were discussed at the last meeting that this Commission recommended have been made, and, um, that, that's it.
Does anyone have any questions so far with the updated changes that were made? No, nothing?
We took all your advice at prom, and we threw all of them.
I did.
Yeah, you did a good job.
Yes.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, I've read your multiple iterations of this, so it looks like you've got a lot of great stuff here, so this is good. Um, so I, I missed what you said about Board of Education holding that list. Everything else is good to go, pending what the superintendent says about this list.
Well, this is what the superintendent's office gave.
I know. I mean, well, look, I, because I take issue with the list and the way it's crafted, and I think, look, what I was told was they didn't understand the assignment, so I think we need to look back. It's not, it's a, you know, it's just they, I think they misunderstood what the positions were that they were supposed to be offering that weren't unclassified. So, and outside of that issue, though, if you're comfortable with it, that's fine. Because now my, the issue is just where else in the Charter do we have issues with inconsistencies with this chapter?
So.
And I have another one that I have to follow to that.
And I also, um, where is, so in this version, where is, well, there's four positions in non-competitive division. Where did that go? In there? I'm looking for it, then. Which page? Um, on the old, the original document, the red line one, page 14 out of 22. I'm just trying to find where that.
That draft date?
So, um.
Oh, okay, so here we.
The red line is 18.
Okay, so you crossed it. So page 18, okay, you crossed it out.
So I, I moved it. So again, the request was to, in a linear fashion, reorganize the whole thing, because currently it was all out of order, and we just kind of left it as is, and you pointed, I think that was correct. To, hey, let's make it more linear so we can read it.
Okay.
So that's what we did. So it's not a.
Right, I see.
It's just a move.
I saw, now, I'm sorry. It's on page 18 at the bottom.
Right, so it's on page 18 of the red line, page, uh, 14 of the clean version. But it's still section 213.1.
No, it's not. It's in the.
Yep. Yep. So in the clean version, again, section 213.1 is on page 14. In the red line versions, page 18. Obviously, a red line version is going to take more space.
Do we need to put in there, not only that there'll be no standing or ranked order, and that you will determine a non-competitive selection process? Do we need to specifically express the state that there will not be an examination here?
Uh, no, because I, I don't know if that's what it is. I mean, and, and specifically, we, we introduce the language "selection process." Um, I think by adding that, it, it kind of defeats the purpose of what the civil service structure is. Um, and as long as we appropriate the selection process, that, that's.
Is that process going to change from position to position? Or is there going to be an established process that's utilized across the board?
No, I think it depends on the position.
Correct. From, to the chair, uh, from a uniform testing guidelines, federal guidance and standards, even if we had no civil service, employers are required to have a nondiscriminatory selection process, interviews.
So some of the interviews, some might have been done.
Depending on the job analysis for the position. So you engage in a job analysis, you do a validity study, and the validity study will then determine what the knowledge, skills, and abilities are. Then you construct criterion to determine suitability based on the case they.
So you're going to do that on position by position?
You have to, by federal law, anyways.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you for, for your extra effort, after years of requests. So if I can be simple-minded here, um, you, the document has shrunk by five pages, maybe. By striking some things out, by reordering things, and eliminating redundancies where they may have occurred. Language changes to make it clearer to people reading it, more specific from council viewpoint. We've even had agreements by attorneys who were present, which is wonderful. Is there anything else that sticks in your mind that you wish to have dealt with that we haven't, that we've either ignored, avoided, or not raised?
Uh, to the chair, I think this current proposal presented to the Commission, this body here, really goes a long way on where we were. I, I, I would love to be able to reorganize the whole thing, including the whole charter, but this right here is a 360 dramatic improvement to our abilities to conduct civil service provisions in a manner which is modern, more efficient, uh, and easily, as you said, consumable by our general public. We can, every time I go through it, I see something that, hey, maybe like we can tweak there, but this right here is something that I would consider in a, in a team effort. City Attorney's Office, this body as a goal standard at the moment.
Just for the, for the record here, there should not be any assumption on this understanding that this document initiated from the City Attorney's Office. It did not. Mr. Amato's team has been working on this for over a year, needing weekly, monthly, regularly. They had, they're the closest to it. They came up with their draft, and then Attorney Matola, having had decades of experience in litigation on civil service matters, along with Attorney, Deputy City Attorney, John Mohanet came in, and, and the two of these guys worked collectively to make sure we picked up everything that the City Attorney's Office had bumped into in the way of, uh, troubling litigation rulings over the years. But the concept behind the start here was not a bunch of attorneys sitting around saying, "How do we change the charter?" It was the hands-on people in your department that did it.
I'm not, uh, thank you, but I, that was not an accusation on my part.
Oh, no, no, and I, and I didn't take it that way. I just wanted to make it clear that this is not attorney rule.
And I, for priority purposes, um, what, uh, with many members of the council here, they have to vote on, uh, settlements. So have, have the issues that were present in the past that caused this understanding that went from quibbles to profundity, okay, and taken to court or some other part of grievance, have they been resolved to the best of your looking at modern documents?
Yes. I would, I would say so, yes. I mean, you never know, but yes.
No, I'm not asking for it to be a problem.
Someone's going to bring a lawsuit under this new charter for some reason, I can guarantee that. I think it's, it's going to be a lot easier to defend, because we clarified language, organized it better. You know, you could make an argument that we're going to have less litigation now because the document's more clear. And when things are more clear and understandable, there's, there's not a difference of opinion that Boris will report to argue about. So when I look at this, I kind of try to draft it, try to make it as simple language as possible and clear, because how many times in my career I've read statute passed by our legislature? And, you know, it's just amazing. I don't, you can't understand it, and you have to go through statutory construction and look up legislative history, and then just taking the time and road the way it was supposed to be written, we'd be better off. I think that was the, one of the big problems with our current charter under the civil service provisions, is just, all due respect to what was written 67 years ago, it was poorly written, and, uh, in some areas, some of it's, some of it's great, that could be wrong. And, and I, and when I made the presentation to you a couple Saturdays ago, we kept really the, the integrity of the civil service system and what our charter says, the appeal process, given competitive examinations, all of those things, which makes it an important document and makes it fair, and something that residents of the city should be proud of, that there is a process in place to make sure that when someone applies for a job to the city Bridgeport, that they're going to be given a fair chance to get that job through a competitive process. So that's what we did.
You, you may not be aware, but the council people over here tonight are aware that I often finish my comments saying three words, "Time will tell."
Right.
And you have taken, or they have taken, the time to work together. They had a year more than we did as a group. Thank goodness, because improvement can happen when you take the time and you have a group of people who are respectful of the, of their duty. And so, again, thank you. And, and I wanted to make sure, because civil service was something I heard with a commentary for half dozen years anyway. I would ask questions, and Eric and I, 10 years ago, he was giving me, getting me grounded in how we were, how we work as a city in personnel, labor, benefits, et cetera, and anything else that intersects with employment law. So if this sets us in a better position, I'm, that's why I'm taking the extra time, because we're on camera, we're not under oath, but we are, we are honestly presenting something good. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I actually do have to, you did have your hand up a while ago.
No, I'm still in, um, 213.1. Instead of personal director, should we have acting director?
What page are we on?
Uh, I'm still in the, um, 213.1, five. We already say that personal director.
Page 14, 22. Thank you.
Do we have a, that's acting director, or do we say that personal director?
Personnel Director is a term.
Plus the title.
Right. A term for a position, civil service. It's actually civil service Personnel Director, I believe.
Uh, so the charter establishes the term Personnel Director, and again, the powers and duties are explained here. Are we using the term acting as in like the provisional state of temporary or without taking the test, or how, how are we using the?
Personnel, you know, yeah.
Personnel. Yeah, so it's Personnel Director, and that's been the title, uh, essentially forever day. And, um, I don't know acting with the place. So it's, when, when doing my taxes, my taxidermist calls me Personnel Assistant. I'm like, okay, sure. Um, but it's a, it's a personnel.
Right, you're in charge of the personnel of the city?
If you jump to section 20, it's now section 204, on the marked version, it's page four.
Page four, 27?
Yes, it talks about what Personnel Director is and how that individual is appointed.
So it's the, and, uh.
Yes.
204 defines it, 20.
Yeah. 205.
205 is the one I wrote.
And then 206. And the powers.
Straight through.
Are you thinking during the probation, probationary period, there should be an acting Personnel Director?
Yeah, that's a, okay, you know, I'm physically in the job, yeah.
No, 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 I'm sorry. So, so he, the per, they would still be called a Personnel Director even during their probationary period. All of our, uh, most of our positions in the city serve a six-month probationary period to determine whether or not the individual can do the job. And, and so they still hold the, the title, whatever that would be, Police Lieutenant, Personnel Director, Administrative Assistant. So they're not called acting at that time. They, they're, they're, they hold a title, but they're, what they're actually called sometimes is probationary Personnel Director. But, uh, that section, uh, certainly indicates that the Personnel Director has that probationary period for that six months.
As a probationary.
Yeah. You wouldn't want to call him an acting, because an acting, acting is, is more temporary. We have to put someone in a position temporarily until we can get a bona fide permanent person filling. So when you bring someone in after competitive process, they're, hopefully, they're not going to be temporary.
You're still staying in the temporary bracket and in that qualifying, you still didn't get reappointed.
Yeah. Well, yeah, probation is a better line of stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom?
So I'll echo the praise, because this took a lot of work, and a lot of people don't find this very interesting. It's really not, unless you're.
Thank you, Tom.
But my concern, as you all know, is that we're going to find a mistake, and we're going to find a place in the charter that's inconsistent with what we just did in this chapter. So here's my thing, I'm looking especially at Mark. There's several, as I was going through the charter again today to look at the other sections that we haven't touched, there's a whole bunch of crap in here that doesn't apply anymore, that's purely meaningless, or that needs more flexibility, because it's either something that should probably be decided by a civil service commission, or can easily be given back to the council to deal with by ordinance. So Mednic had given us some language where other charters basically said, uh, for a specific provision, "This provision is in full force and effect until," and then basically had the mayor create a committee or establish a committee with certain members on it, a task force that would essentially propose any ordinance action, or, and I would add that any civil service action that's necessary. And then as soon as that action happens, then that section is gone from the charter. I'm wondering if you all think that's the best approach here. I mean, for, I'm just taking public facilities deputy directors. They're supposed to be classified, but that's not what the section on public facilities says. So we've already got a conflict right off the rip. I mean, we don't have the time to sit here and read. I mean, we don't have the time to sit here and read every page and figure that out, but if we give it back to the city council to deal with by ordinance, they can deal with the boards and commissions issues. They can deal with, the civil service commission certainly can deal with, like, you know, what do we deal with tax excessive, tax related treasure positions that we've now played around with in chapter seventeen? I'm curious what you think about that.
Yeah, so through the chair, one of the things in order to establish or create this unclassified list is that we did go through the charter, and where it said, shall be pointed at the discretion of the mayor in the public facilities di, section, we just moved, we just copied that language and moved it into a clarifying section of it. It's in the unclassified service. I think it's deputy director of public works where in chapter seventeen it said, shall be in the unclassified service. In chapter twelve, I think that's where public facilities is. I think it says, the director of public facilities shall be appointed by the mayor, and the deputy director shall be appointed at the discretion of the director of public facilities. The term discretionary does get you into that ballpark, that, well, should it be in the unclassified service. The other thing too is that the deputy directors have now been affiliated with a union. So, not only, so it's, so not only is maybe seventeen have conflict, but when we collectively bargain these classifications or these changes in a collective bargaining contract and then present them to city council, I think it's Mark's brother, numerous times in statute, says that the labor relations office should be, right, takes that precedent, and it, you should be informing the council at that point. I know, John and myself, we've gone through chapter seventeen as much as we could and put the subject to collective bargaining as much as we could. Yeah, I mean, without rewriting all of those sections, I think it'd be tough. But again, I can assure you that we only arrived at our unclassified list right now through going through those sections. And when it said at the discretion of the mayor, we just got, like, moved.
And what it does is, of course, by having it in the charter this way, it ties everyone's stance. I mean, the council can be nimble, and so can the civil service commission. And I'm afraid when too much stuff is in the charter, the charter is like the document that decides like the fundamental questions, and then everything else in government should be decided by, you know, the officials.
You, I think you said it upfront, you obviously cannot amend the charter by ordinance. I think you were talking about having certain charter provisions sunset when, when ordinance are adopted. But unless you identify the right sections, it's still the same work.
Chapter eleven, section one, "There shall continue to be a board of appraisal of benefits and damages composed of three electors of the city." What the hell is that? I mean, we can go on and on through this document, but, you know, and as I mentioned, even the department ones, you know, chapter twenty on health department, chapter twelve on public facilities, chapters eighteen.
So, Tom, are you saying that we can, what are you saying?
So, what I'm saying is, for these chapters where we might run into problems, and they're all related to specific departments, put in this language that says, "There shall be a committee composed of blank, 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 how we restructure it." And they're tasked with coming up with ordinances or acting through civil service. I don't know exactly what the words would say, but there's some trigger. And as soon as they, the council adopts a ordinance, re-establishing those commissions or establishing what the duties of those departments are, or setting forth how that employee ought to be hired consistent with civil service, then those provisions no longer exist in the charter. So, the charter language is valid until they take their action. And that way, the council now can continue this work that we've done for almost half of this book. And this can be a living thing, and they get to it as they get to it, and then it resolves these potential conflicts. My concern, the starting concern, there's a lot of concerns, but the starting concern is there's stuff that we're about to say yes to here, and then you'll find another section of the charter that disagrees with it. And these guys are back in place, one to John Lee's question about, are they gonna end up back in court one day? Yeah, they are.
I would be interested in Steve Mednick identifying some authority to do that, because in essence, what it's saying is, you're taking the charter amendment process away from the electorate, away from the legislative party, and away from a petition. And you're saying that here's the charter, but it can be changed by the legislative body through ordinance. That's not what the statutory provision for how to amend the charter says. If he can find some authority, he's the expert statewide on this.
Yeah, no, and he sent us some language where he's done enough, so I assume he's.
I don't know if he's ever challenged, but nevertheless, you understand my concern.
So, we don't have that.
So, I want him to opine on that.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's.
Because you did mention that you would share that language with us in the Edron government.
Well, he said it's a tie-in show, I think.
That's what you shared with all of us.
Yeah, but we haven't really, only haven't really talked.
Is there some way they can, they can make a clause that says that what, if approved, that the changes that are here are what is valid and the other stuff is not?
I think what happens is this, if you see a section like chapter eleven, that, and I don't know if the city council will do this, you're gonna have language that says that the provisions of chapter eleven shall remain in effect until through ordinance the city council acts to amend or maybe just abolish this. I don't, I think that's what you can do.
Well, that's what Steve seems to.
Right, so, but I, I don't know how many of these sections, or you can read chapter eleven out and say, we don't need this. I don't know if it is. So, I don't know if we've ever had any litigation or public improvements, chapter eleven.
I am not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying it's a deviation from the statutory process to amend the charter. So, Steve has some language, it'd be great if it's been tested, if it hasn't been. Again, he's the most experienced statewide in doing this, so I would probably defer to him, and I wanted to defer to him, right?
Well, okay, on the side of that question, which is a valid question, would you support the first shot?
Yeah, I mean, it makes business sense, but I don't have a vote. I would, just before we get off this topic completely, I'd like, if we could, just jump back to the deputy public facilities example, because that's one where I don't see them listed any longer as unclassified. But, and I know they're in a collective bargaining agreement, therefore, they cannot be replaced except for just cause. But do we still have the appointment process for them as being selected by the director? Because you don't select director, deputy directors, if they're in the classified service, you have to test, are they gonna be in the non-competitive division? You know.
This is my, this is my problem, and how many other examples are?
Well, that's why this is a good example, because it's got everything. It's in the charter that you serve only at the pleasure of, we've changed that by union affiliation, but we haven't changed the appointment process, which is consistent with unclassified, it's not consistent with classified, unless at least you put it in the non-competitive division, and. Is it listed, is it listed in the non-competitive section?
We don't list non-competitive.
Okay, so if you don't list it, how does it get in there? It only gets tested by you having this vote. They did vote on that?
Uh, I believe, what?
I'd be kinda shocked what they did. But they can do it that way, that.
Right. And so, the, the charter now allows for the creation of positions in the non-competitive service, right?
Yeah, no, I know.
And then, then we already have language of, in the appropriate selection process, we can, we can make it make sense even with the director being a part of that selection process. The only issue that you're gonna have is serving at the pleasure of the director. But again, my.
No, it's definitely collectively bargained out.
Right, but I suspect when the union put it, when the position went in the union, they should have put it in the non-competitive division at that time.
Right.
They may have, I would have.
And so, I'm kinda concerned about that too. The more concerning piece is the confusion of serving at the pleasure of the direct, the pleasure of the director. But again, by collective bargaining, and that's why I made reference to that.
Okay, you've satisfied the answer. Jump to the last, very end, you're, section two twenty-five, where it defers to general statute and special acts. Does it make, is this a place where you also want to defer that general concern about something superseded by collective bargaining agreement as a catch-all? Or do you, you not be attractive, perhaps, deal with that? Does that make sense, or did you pick it up?
I feel like we.
We have it in the charter in a few different sections.
I thought you were gonna do something at the end, and it should be someplace where it should be. Why wouldn't you say no provision, inconsistently provision in a chapter? And just say, no general statute, specialized, or provision of a applicable collective bargaining, just as a catch-all?
I like, I like statute better, because collective bargaining, I mean, those things get right there.
Well, okay, look, you can argue that the statute covers it, right, as a statute.
That's what gives the.
All right, if that was your thinking, I can live with that. Thank you.
Do you have more questions?
I mean, I guess, you know, again, there's a bunch of positions, so I don't need to belabor the points, you know it, but like city engineer, you know, tax assessor, collector, treasurer, you know, there's no ability to update even what the requirements are for that job under the current charter unless we're just gonna keep doing charter revisions until we start getting into the weeds on things that are really not things this mission should be decided.
Well, this is only ninety days, and maybe there should be.
But my point is, there might, I just, there might be a way, and I just, again, from a, would you be happy with Mark's question aside, with that process, is that good for you? Is that a good thing in your view, if we did that?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we can get these updates as proposed through voted on, I don't think it's a bad idea to, if we have the legal opinions, to be able to add those provisions and create boards and commissions to develop those appointment processes. I would, I would oppose that.
Any other questions or comments? I would like to say thank you for listening to our recommendations and making revisions and providing us with this updated draft and putting on the timeline for the test.
Thank you, Miss Smith, for your time and your.
Did you have something?
I'm sorry, bullet point twenty on city treasurer, because I just found it. I thought we were getting rid of that.
Oh, I think we have to leave it because that's the damn new current charter section, right?
This is what I mean, like, so we're really not, you know, we're fixing things, but we're not fixing things.
Are you suggesting not listing all of those?
Well, our, our thought was that the city treasurer shouldn't be in the unclassified service. And I think I agree with that, but unless we're gonna change that chapter, to your point, that I want to mirror what the existing charter says.
Are you changing the chapter for the city treasurer?
Well, like, you know, that's what raises these questions about, like, you know, is there any inconsistency between this chapter and the other?
It's not inconsistent, it just needs.
Well, now it's consistent, right, but we don't want it all. I mean, this isn't easy enough, like, this one's pretty, like, discreet and easy, we can just yank that out, unless. I'll work with Mark on to figure out.
Page, can you tell us page number?
Of the.
The actual charter.
Of the, of the redline version, it's page seven, I don't know what it is.
Right, and so, the language there says, appointed pursuant to the provisions of the charter.
Current charter.
The current charter. Because the chapter eight, section eleven, the current charter, says, "In December of each odd number of years, the mayor shall appoint a treasurer who shall serve a term of two years." So, to, as you said, it makes current or consistent with the existing language of the charter. But if you change it in the charter, then.
So, we had a change in one, change in here, but you're okay, you don't feel that that should be here, is your point?
Yeah, I, again, what we did was, we went through the existing charter, and we mirrored it to confirm that these positions are in unclassified service to avoid the litigation of whether or not they are.
Right, yeah, so, you know, I think this is really good to go, with the exception of that issue in the superintendent positions, I just think we need to get a report back from them before we vote on that. Everything else, I mean, is great.
I would like to read it, read the updates, and then get back to the bottom.
Well, it's only, it's only on Saturday.
And that's it?
And then Monday to vote, Saturday.
Well, Monday, you gotta vote, that was Monday rather than on the weekend.
Yeah, I don't think anything that's, I think it's just like a big deal. It's faith when she's reading, and she starts marking up your draft.
Well, I did, I was quiet today. So, I'm, I'm good with what is here, I just have to read it. If there is anything, I mean.
If you want us to attend another reading, just.
Well, depending on the outcome, the Mark conversation that we have with Mednick, we may need you to recreate the whole charter again, just to make sure that we're figuring out anything else that should be yanked. And again, specifically the department chapters, there's only about five or six.
What I'll start to do, tomorrow, I'll start reading the whole charter, and just read and see if there's something that comes up that this could be a conflict with what we've done.
I'll buy the popcorn.
I think you should have Tom come here with you and help you read.
We'll sit around the table, we'll pop a popcorn.
I gotta be honest with you, a little bit of a.
It's round.
I don't know why we're doing this. I don't know why.
Next on our agenda is to, is number two, which is to talk and review all of the chapters that we have discussed as well as other things. I would like to discuss last night. Last night's meeting, I felt that our, the voting towards the end of the meeting was rushed, and quite honestly, I don't know how people voted. And I think that it is important that in, with sections such as the civil service and the city council and the other, and chapter four, I think those do need a roll call vote, and we do need to take more time to discuss those things. We've spent time on three words, deliberating over three words, longer than we had in that conversation last night. So, I would like to put forth a motion to reconsider chapter five, city council, section one, subsection A and section B. Thank you. And should that reconsideration pass, sections one, subsection A and B will be back on the table for reconsideration. So, I made that motion, and.
Whoever, whoever makes the motion has to be somebody who voted to approve it, right, that's all.
So, yes, I did. So, I would, and you were, so can the secondar also, is the secondar necessary to be on the yes side? Or does it matter?
Probably, but I'm sure any other people will support your motion.
Yeah, I'll second it, but.
Thank you.
So, by roll call vote?
So, can we have a roll call vote for, are those in favor of reconsidering this motion, the vote?
Roll call? Yeah.
Okay, then it's, plans to roll call vote, all those who agree are sticking to by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, if the motion passes, reconsideration.
Okay. So, I really want this conversation open for discussion, and also considering. I really want this conversation open for discussion and also consideration of some of the language that was put into into that section. I I I would like to share a couple of things that I did research and find out. Um, last night we were told that Bridgeport is the only city, the big the city with the biggest city council.
Not true.
It is.
Oh, sorry.
It is not. Bridgeport has twenty members, two per district. Stanford has forty members, two per district. Um, they are actually their population is smaller than ours. Um, New Haven has the size of thirty members, one per ward. Um, again, they're smaller than us. Um, wait, who is this one? Um, Danbury, another twenty-one members, two per ward and seven at large. Um, and they have only eighty-six thousand people. Um, or that was an estimate. Uh, Westport, really small, only twenty-seven thousand people. Well, give or take. Um, thirty-six members on theirs, on their representative town committee. Greenwich is really out of out of this is a lot, two hundred thirty members.
From the council?
On their representative town uh meetings. Um, other committees have small, I mean, other towns like Norwalk has eighteen members, Waterbury fifteen. Um, again, all of their populations are smaller than ours. Um, so with that and thinking about last night's comment, I did vote yes because I felt, oh, okay, well, many other cities have smaller sizes. Sure, maybe we should consider that. But we don't, and we are the largest city in this state. Um, so that is one um, one thing that I came came to. Um, also, looking into um, what is it? Oh, this one. Looking into the compensation piece. Um, Bridgeport, members do not receive salaries but are reimbursed for expenses through stipends, which are, it's fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand, um. Huh? Nineteen now?
It's nineteen. It's fifteen. Thirteen, yeah.
It's fifteen current income, reading what's now. New Haven, um, Board of Aldermen's, members receive an annual stipend of two thousand dollars. And the board president receives six thousand two hundred and fifty. Um, there is a proposal to increase up to five thousand per member with automatic cost of living adjustments under consideration. Waterbury, the members receive an annual salary of four thousand. City council members in Hartford have received an annual salary of fifteen thousand along with health benefits, um, health insurance benefits. So there there is a there's a lot going on. Um, and if we want to talk about around the country, because that was also mentioned, um, the Chicago fifty fifty members, uh, well, I'm not going to want to that one either. Uh, Houston, Texas, they have sixteen. So it it varies along many um, many sizes. But to say that Bridgeport has the the largest city council is not true. Um, and um, I I don't think we should be, you know, I think we need to consider the the size of the this the city and the needs of the city. And while there was much talk about, oh, city council members don't get along or city council, I haven't heard from my city council member. That's not a structure problem. That is a people problem. So I also believe that ninety days is not enough time for this commission to properly research and come up with a structure that is best for the people of this city. So, um, where did my motion go? Um, so, that being said, um, I would like to make a motion to delete the following language in section one um, as well as uh deleting the section where it says uh keeping the title section, a selection and deleting the compensation at this point. Um, I also believe in deleting the language of A, one subsection A language um, effective December thirty, uh, two thousand thirty-one, the city council shall consist of fifteen members um, and two amended. But I would like to have further discussion and time to really think about what would be appropriate for this city. Also, what was discussed yesterday, somebody had mentioned that rather than six at, I mean, five at large, really, there should be six at large. So you are guaranteed that thirty, uh, three, three-person majority and guaranteed three people um of the minority party parties. I'll stop there for now, but I open up the discussion.
I'm gonna go. So first of all, I I I know I was one of the people talking about how we have a larger council. I never said the largest in Connecticut. I know it's not true. It was about Stanford forty. And I actually referenced last night, New Haven having thirty. But I wanted to point out that they each individually represent a district. So there's not a two-person-per-district model in those places. In those places. I didn't say nowhere in the world and nowhere in Connecticut.
Are the districts smaller than that?
Yeah, so they're small, so they represent smaller areas. So it'd be more similar to like if we had one.
Stanford is two per district.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bridgeport's two per district. I can go through that. New Haven has one per district.
Or it's more.
Um, oh, Danbury is two per district plus that seven at large.
Well, so I I was for probably, you know, last night I was one of the people that said we maybe should consider expanding the number of at-large so that there's more minority party representation. We got here. Let's remember how we got here.
We got here fast.
Yeah, just like with everything, the office is fast.
Not already. Simple words we have spent a lot of time on. And this is an important topic that I think we need to hear from everybody.
So so we got here because people were recommending that we do at-large seats so that we can have minority party representation.
But why can't you why can't you still maintain the twenty and then have six at-large?
Well, because in my view, and I think other members of the commission have the same view, that the council is larger than average. As I said, when we go around the country, when we ask these questions, how many council members do you have? Al- almost universally, universally, when our council members go to nationally in the cities, they say, wow, you have a lot of people.
Do they have the same needs as Bridgeport?
I'm sorry, I mean.
Sorry.
I'm just, listen, I I respect that there's maybe a difference of view here, but respectfully, there are multiple commission members here that thought this was an okay idea. I'm expressing why. We hear frequently when we go to nationally in the cities that we have a larger body of average. And I know a lot of commission members don't want to pay the city council, but I was of the view that maybe we should consider paying for city council. But people were uncomfortable because of the number of them. And like you said, in Hartford, in Hartford, they have nine people. And those nine people get a fifteen thousand dollar salary. And I don't think that that's an unreasonable thing. Now, we didn't want to go to nine because we thought it was way too small, right? And we wanted to preserve the ten people per district. And we wanted to incorporate at-large people. So that's how we got here. And I still think that the council members should be paid if that's what they want. A lot of people that paid it, not not universally. Some people would prefer to keep the stipend system. But I know the commission members expressed that council members get too much. In my view, I don't think that they necessarily get too much. I think that we should be encouraging council members or people to run for the office. And I think by having fewer of them, I think by having at-large members, and I think by paying those people or encouraging people to run for the office. That's my view.
Now, if people disagree with that, I get that.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting.
Do you chair? Last night, I I think I began by saying that it's a little much to put on our agenda in ninety days and we should project to another commission. My gut said that's what I should have gone with. Um, but ultimately, I'm not stuck on changing this to ten members. I have no problem maintaining twenty. What I am stuck on is minority representation. So we need to go to twenty-five members. We need to go to twenty-five members. I always, whatever number we desire. I I served on on council with ten ten, which might have been thirty, forty years ago. But it was a discussion was not, it wasn't nasty discussions. It was things that we got things done because we had office abuse here, abuse here. It was a personality clash. That's what we really need to go back to. No clash in personalities. Really, it's vitally important representing the cities. Like, oh, we know there's only Republicans. We, no, we have Republicans. They deserve to be represented on this council. So we go to twenty-six members. We go to twenty-six members. Minority representation is extremely important to move this city forward. Thank you.
Are there others that would like to speak on the commission first? Yes.
Can light up the new information that I've been providing. Thank you very much for the research and the information you've brought to the table. I believe it's important to keep up most representation to the people and the community of the city in Bridgeport. I believe staying with twenty plus state six, um, on law, it doesn't give a proper representation to the city of Bridgeport. But the one thing I said would increase the stipend to the council to provide more service and better access to the people that are here. That's my stat.
Am I correct that the stipends are by ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes. So I I my personal opinion is to keep the stipend issue, allow the council members to answer for the changes in this order.
Well, let's give the let's the board give their opinion and then let the city council.
So I mean, I don't think the stipend issue can be dealt with right by us. But so the question is, should we give compensation? Which is different because remember yesterday I was explaining that the stipend is a card that council members get where they pay for government expenses.
Can can we can we increase what they can spend, their stipends higher?
No, no, no.
That's under the charter.
I think we should look at it this way. Increase the stipends that they could do more within the community that the people that represent. Create, keep the twenty member and not put it to six of large so that we have more body of more representation on the city. I think that's a better representation of the city in Bridgeport rather than trying to change it or shoring.
But but when it comes to those six members, it should be for minority party, minority parties.
That can.
Well, I think this is why I suggested yesterday is six because I thought that it could expand on.
Three, I want it should be six members from minority party. So you so typically you're going to end up with twenty Democrats, okay? But at least we will ultimately end up with six members, whether it be working parties, whether it be Republicans, whether it be any six members.
Oh, see, that's where I disagreed with you. And the reason is because how can you have a citywide election where Democrats control the city and all of the at-larges, even a majority of them, need to be of the minor party? That can't be so. This was another reason why, look, with all due respect, I'm not trying to, look, we've set this out to twenty thirty-one. We were trying to just do the right thing. We didn't want to dilute the minor party. People wanted to give them some authority, which is why limiting the number gave them a little more juice on the council. And I see you're 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 making the same attempt now, saying, oh, the six, but again, you can't have a democratic election in a city where Democrats control and then say, oh, the minor party gets more.
So so.
The best you can do is have.
So so if we can go with three and three.
Yes.
All right, guys. But I'm just, my my point of the matter is we need minority representation. However we get to it is how we get to it.
Often, there's public speaking before the city council meets. Uh, last night, I was limited in my attendance at the meeting. Uh, and I didn't understand the flow of everything. We never have discussed twenty plus. It was always twenty minus, the different allocation. So even at this point, we've got additional probation. So since the city council is here in such strong numbers, the strongest numbers we've seen and will be hearing from them. So I've got, and you can time me for three minutes. At least I know you're listening. You're listening to me today. God bless you. Fellow citizens, fellow citizens of Bridgeport, whether you're present tonight as a city council member with concerns about facts or rumors.
Oh, John, can you please sit down to camera?
Why don't I, why don't I come down where you can get me?
Or you can turn your face against it.
That's what I'll do. I'm my friend here.
We're all your friends behind you.
Well, they're used to it.
Yes, we are.
Fellow fellow citizens of Bridgeport, whether you're present tonight as a city council member with concerns about facts or rumors about what has been proposed and or processed by this charter commission or merely a resident observer, and I don't know if that covers you because I don't. But you'll you'll say hello after. Uh, or processed by the charter commission, uh, or as a taxpayer or a charter commission member carrying on our charge to use our knowledge, sense of fairness and responsibility for governance process, or civics. Imagine that, word stewardship. Civics is the study, I remind you, of citizen rights and responsibilities, not politics. We welcome your listening or participation. Sunday night, some of you may have seen the Edward, our Murrow play simultaneous played on video and on stage. I caught two quotes that were impressive to me working on the charter commission. And one of them was, "Our history will be what we make of it," which was back in the fifties. And we're still dealing with that seventy, seventy-five years later. And you have provided us three months through this group after holding that from January twenty twenty-four, when the Connecticut Post reported that the mayor and the council president agreed to create a charter review commission. Why did it take so long? We had civil service working on the material during the time evidently anticipating our appointment. The second quote from the Murrow presentation dealt with, quote, "fighting ignorance, intolerance, and indifference." And what are we prepared to do? And if the answer that we come is maintaining a status quo on structure and waiting for a vote, uh, the people's vote, uh, what about the several districts where fewer than ten percent of residents registered to vote actually do so in an off-year municipal election? And I've got the districts and I've got the information from the state of Connecticut and Secretary of State and from our registered voters. That response from some council members seems to miss the logic of changing the structure and putting an emphasis on practical civics in casual conversations in your district to inform, to respond, to inspire, as I suggested in public speaking sessions for the past nine months. I think if you look at the archives, you'll see that. Governor Governor Newsom of California last evening stated that our current chief executive is, quote, "taking a wrecking ball to our founding fathers' historic project." Three co-equal branches of independent government, Bridgeport, oh, we have two branches. And the commission has endeavored to move them towards more equality, independence, and forward progress for residents and voters of the city. We also have focused on encouraging practical civics by opening boards and commissions to formal administrative process before each term expires, including trainings, support, and regular evaluations and reports on their functioning. What happened to fair rent, fair housing commissions over twenty years was an example of benign neglect. At best, at best. At worst, it was aimed at permitting inequality in a truly diverse community. At worst, it was aimed at permitting inequality in a truly diverse community by letting a free market reign all by itself. Was what happened at success village necessary? Where there was nobody to deal with co-ops or condos because the state statute handled it in locally preventable with an effective fair housing commission present. And then I close with time will tell. And more time with your assistance for added feedback. Can we ask the mayor to allow and call for a special session of the city council in a few days after your single July session before Friday, which happens to be Friday the thirteenth? As this is the only way we guarantee the time to have the interaction back and forth. We've been meeting the last two weeks here on a expedited version. So we could, I, I'm ready to listen to the various comments. But in a way, forcing the status quo past the status quo, twenty people, no expansion. Rather than blowing it up, let's start new. I mean, that's, that seems to be part of the production. I'm, I'm looking to hear from y'all. Thank you. I have comments of this and I will send it to each of you tonight.
So do you want me to enter that as an exhibit?
Please, exhibit three.
I've been out of the room, but just as a matter of process, step thoroughly, the process is that when you make your recommendations to the council, the council as a whole will deliberate and then will return to you their impressions. I would suspect that something the council as a whole is going to take a good look at are things that affect the council itself. The number of council members, how they're selected, whether they're compensated. It would be shocking that they would not look at that, weigh in on it and probably make the final determiner on that point. But that's, that process, that's when they weigh in, when it's referred to them. Unless you're having a public hearing, which I guess you have one tomorrow. Councilperson, after that, just like anybody else and say whatever they want at that time. But ultimately they get the vote when it comes to.
We're here, we're, I've been informed by that previous to tonight, previous to today, I've been informed that one change from the status quo means the council is against it. Now, that is, I, I called it, I said, whether it's the truth or rumor. Okay? But that's the type of thing that we're facing here. And I am, I'm willing to invest more time and to listen with acuity to other alternatives. I like perhaps the increase to give more people who are not participating in democratic process. And I'll sit down. But I, what if.
No, I just can't sit down because of the video.
No one council member speaks for the council. They have to be as a group when it's going to have their chance. They can talk at the public hearings individually like anyone else. They will get it as a group.
Okay, I don't understand what, why, what's going on here.
May I? I know she, I think we're, we're having a process issue here.
I'm giving our commission members time to talk. This is what we want.
Right, and I think, and I think that's what we should do. We have forwarded a proposal, but this is, as we've talked about a million times, not the end of the road. We vote on something, send it to council, the council gets to, they have to under the statute have a public hearing themselves, an additional one we're doing tomorrow. And then they have to send us the comments back. And then we have another round of this. And then even that goes back to them for an up or down vote on each of the changes we made. So there's a long involved process that the council has to take and they have final decision. So I, I think that's the thing that.
Question, is there, is there a drop date to get it out of the ballot?
Yes, I don't know what it is with Secretary of State, but it's.
September fifth, September fifth.
Nine, five, okay.
Diane McKnight, you have your hand up.
Yes, ma'am, sure. So I wasn't here yesterday. But as far as what I think about council member size, I think logically, Bridgeport is a weird city. We, we are the biggest in population, but we're not the biggest in land or square mile. We're very condensed and on top of each other city. And the census is probably not even right for how many people are really here. So keeping two per district unless they be districted. To keep the twenty, I would agree with, I think that's the logical answer for, for me, in my opinion.
What are your thoughts about the six at large, three from the majority and three from the minority party?
It depends on how you look at that, what do you call the minority parties? A lot of times, like me, I'm an independent, we might get left out, they might just say the Republicans are a minority party. So is it going to be looked at from a perspective that?
If you run as a candidate, it'll be.
You run as a candidate, so whoever they elect.
Right, right, right.
You have the option to run.
Right, right. But that, that, I, I think three would, would be good. And then as far as the compensation, in, in my opinion, and I know this might be outside of the scope of what we can do, but it just as a recommendation. I don't think we should decrease it to twenty unless they can draw it as a salary. What, if, if, if we're just going to increase it from fifteen to twenty thousand.
The stipend.
The stipend.
Which should be used for city.
Right. I would like to see it increased, I would like to see it increased to twenty thousand. But also they can draw really from, as a salary. Because, because in my opinion.
So when you're saying they get a five thousand dollar salary, basically?
No, they should get a twenty thousand dollar salary.
Oh.
And, and they should be able to draw for whatever they want to do in their district, they should get additional five thousand. Now, the reason why I say this is because I work two jobs. It would be impossible for me to be a city council person, impossible. But what they have to do to do it effectively and efficiently and work at the same time. If we're all honest about this, really, you could probably really only work a part-time job. Now, if you don't do that, then you're going to get the fifteen thousand as a stipend. And you're going to start taking one to bread and sticking it in another bread bag. What I mean by that is you're going to find yourself starting to say, this is for, for my district. And you find ways to draw money out and put in your pocket because at the end of the day, you got to eat. And this, this generates more corruption. So to eliminate corruption, a city this large should, those, those city council people should have a stipend. I, I lived in, I lived in, I lived in both places, here in Brooklyn, New York. In Brooklyn, New York, in the city of New York, they all call twenty-four seven. That's what they do, they city council, they able to serve the people in their district twenty-four seven. Now, we may not have the infrastructure to be able to recreate this model like that. But that's why they're probably more effective because that's what they do. You have to do this, there's no way. There's no way that you could be a city council person and really serve effectively, working a regular job forty hours a week. Then what happens is what, what happens? You get a city job. And then when it's time to vote, and it's not any in particular, a, a mayor, it could be any mayor. It's not about the mayor, it's about the office. So now, everything's political now. So now, if you don't vote that way, now your job is in jeopardy. Because you work for the city. But they, but they let you, but they let you work for the city because you really don't have to be accountable on the job because you're on the city council. So you could get away with not being there and stuff like that. Because things like that that happen, I'm, I'm a realist, man, I keep it a hundred, that's what we do. Right? So I don't know how we can do it as far as that part. But I really would like to see city council get a salary so they can be more effective and the citizens be held more accountable. Because if not, we're going to continue to be a mirror image of Camden, New Jersey. And that's the bottom line, that's our twin sister, Camden, New Jersey. Same situation. And, and, and that's, that's, that's how I feel.
Can I just add one thing? I mentioned the year from Brooklyn. When I was in law school, I worked for the Boston City Council. And just out of curiosity, I looked up to see what their makeup is now. Because they were all very well compensated when I worked there. Their current, Boston's population, I think, is something north of six hundred thousand, maybe seven hundred. They have thirteen council members, nine districts and four at large. I don't know whether they have a minority guaranteed, I don't, I don't believe they do. But I just point that out to simply say, the number of council people is more of a structural issue than it is based on population. No doubt Bridgeport's the largest population in the state. That doesn't mean you necessarily have to have the largest council. It's how you want to structure it. Now, again, as I said, when I worked for the Boston City Council back in the seventies, every one of those was a significant salary and every council person had their own paid assistant. And if you're on a committee, you've got additional staff. So there's a lot of money being spent before you're not going to have fifty council members. The way you described their professionals. So there's a lot of thought that goes into it. I just wanted to throw that out there because I don't want you to think that the decision of how we need is population based necessarily.
Thank you. Are there any other board members, I mean, commission members that would like to speak?
Thank you, Chair. So I would like to start by going back to my, our discussion last night. And my point of view last night. And I started off by saying that originally when we talked about this weeks, there were weeks ago, I was not in agreement with changing to ten council members. And after much discussion amongst, of course, all of us, I changed my opinion. And a big part of that speaks to something that is not entirely going to be popular, who's saying this? But I am, as you said, we need to keep it real. And I think there's an elephant in the room. And it is the nature of politics in the city of Bridgeport, which may or may not be very different from Stanford and Hampden and New Haven. Stanford is a very wealthy city. New Haven has all of the universities, it is just different. Bridgeport is run by the Democratic Party. It, it, it has been forever, but it is especially bad now. And it's very distressing to me because I feel as though our city doesn't look like Stanford or New Haven or even, how about, let's talk about Shelton. Why doesn't Bridgeport look like Shelton? Because of the politics in Bridgeport. And when you're elected here, you are potentially beholden to those who got you elected. And with twenty votes on the council, the mayor, and I'm not speaking of a person, I'm talking about the, the role, the mayor has the ability to get the votes where she wants from those who are potentially less or more beholden than others. And that is really why I feel as though there should be less. Because, and, and I do definitely agree, I, I think that the fifteen thousand dollar stipend, I know, I was on city council a lot with a lot of you guys. I know how hard it is, but I will say the whole stipend thing, I think, I don't know what we got it to at the time, but I almost fell off my chair when I realized it was fifteen thousand dollars. Not to say that it's too much money, but a stipend is a royal pain in the backside. You have to account for every penny you spend. I agree, it should, well, it's great, but it's very hard to do. It's a whole nother job to keep track of that. I, I really do, I feel like if, if we change from a stipend to a salary, I, I don't necessarily agree with going up, but I do think that, that those, and those monies would be spent by the people on the expenses that they have by having done this job. And maybe not, maybe some of it not. But the fact that we go through their, their files to say, oh, she bought McDonald's for her niece or that, you know, like, what do we care? They're working very, very hard. Give them some sort of compensation that is not related to a receipt that they have to hand it. Not even enormous amount of money, but, but something. But to get back to the, the structure of the council, I feel very strongly that what we experience here, I would call, you use the word, corruption. I would say there's lots of soft corruption in Bridgeport. It's not intended. People have relationships, people, they, they do favors for others, they get people jobs, they make sure that, you know, I mean, that's, that's how this works in this city. But it is, has been out of control in Bridgeport forever. My hope in changing the structure, totally understanding that we do not have enough time for that. And maybe we should turn back to the council, if they were the ones who held it up for a year, we should be turning to them to say, thanks to you, we had three months. I don't know who's to, who, you know, what the process was and what happened. But I think we have to make a change. We're not going to have another council re, or charter revision. It, it's been twenty years. This just, something has to change in this city to get us to a better place. And I do agree that it's not necessarily the structure, it's the people, but there are too many people.
I, I, I just, I'm sorry, no, go ahead. No, no, I want to finish. I'm, I want to address the city council that is here. What I have heard in this city about the city council is not good. It's not. So I understand why people want to reduce it. However, I am thinking about the people of the city and the needs that are within the city.
Thank you.
And I, I think that the council members do need to improve their relationships with each other because your fighting, your disagreements, your whatever is getting in the way of the public seeing this as a functioning body. It is irreparable. And that is why many of us, I mean, at one point I said, yeah, you know what, I kind of agree with reducing anything. But then I have to go back to the people of the city. And, you know, as an educator, this city is in need. And when I, when I'm in my school and there are kids in need, you don't reduce the resources, you actually increase the resources. And I think you as city council members really need to dig deep and move beyond your personal issues and focus on the matters at hand that are, you know, the city has a lot of needy issues that need to be, that need to be addressed. And by you representing your districts, you know, I've heard people say, I don't hear from my city council person. If there are two people in a district, why aren't you working with your partner to ensure that every, that every city resident is not who you are, knows how they can get in contact with you? And they feel, they can feel heard. And they can feel that they see a difference in their city. And in their district. So I don't blame people for saying that they want to reduce the size of the city council. And, but I also think about the needs of the city. And also the, the impending development that will probably happen in the city. And you need to be the protectors of the people of the city as well. And, you know, I feel that for my city council person. But I don't see every, not everybody feels that same way about the council. That's where I'm going to end what I have to say.
The main thing I want to address is the stipend. Could everybody have a different opinion on the, on the stipend? And I want to say something about the stipend because I'm like.
The stipend is not a card.
No, I know, but I want to say something about the stipend. No, I know, but I want to say something about the stipend.
Okay, there's, I would like to ask you, for point of order, I, it's very distracting every time I go to listen to a speaker when there are people talking.
Like you just said.
Okay. I want to speak to the stipend and the reason why I want to speak to the stipend is I kind of have a personal, you know, to some extent. During fire time, sometime or another. And when, when in crisis, the council comes through, I have to get all credit for that. But with stipends concerned, I see them using a stipend mostly for people in the city to have fun. You know, because when it's turkey time, I see them buying turkeys. When PT has their, their big event, I see people that don't live in PT, they are not, the council from that side of town, they throw their cards in there. I've seen them do this and I know they do this. So that stipend money, I mean, I know people think they probably put it in their pocket, I don't know anything about that. And I've seen them buy, they need electronics, they buy those kind of things and they help each other with the stipend. I just want to clarify that. And I think that is a good thing. But the other thing that I want to say, when they're, when they're talking about you guys fighting, we all know you guys fight stuff. But what I want to say is what my grandmother used to say to us, me and my sisters and my cousins, because there's a whole bunch of us. She used to always tell us, don't air our dirty laundry out in the street. I know it reminds my grandmother to me, you air it in your house. I'm not saying that you guys are not going to fight, because you're going to fight, because I fight with my siblings and my cousins. I just wanted to say to you guys, could y'all do that upstairs in that council room I went up here the other night? Remember when we were up here? Could y'all go up here and have your fights up there? That's what I want to ask you to do. Because you're, you're, you're allowing all of us to have a bad opinion of the situation because you'll, you'll say, don't eat nasty things to each other right in the public, just go to the dead woman, you know, do your thing. You know, because every time when there's problems, I always see you guys stick together, just like right now. There's an issue going on. Look at, we never seen this many of you together before. When we had the fire, remember? What is the name of the fire? I can remember, I saw it.
Wall Street truck.
Yes, and we had the fire. I ran here that morning, I'm driving, we were all here, we got it together, we got this paper together. Crisis. If we could work like that when there's not a crisis, I think we'd be good. That's all I wanted to say about that. Because I think that's important, because you can't keep tearing people down, you got to say some good things and what you see that they're doing. And you all know within yourselves how much fight you can do. And, and I just like to see you be more positive to one another. You know, and, and the other thing is when people come to complain, that's what I call complaining, what do you guys call the public?
Public.
Everybody comes to public, public comments, it's because just act a little.
Except for Charlie, Charlie doesn't come to complain.
No, Charlie, he comes to tell you about yourself. But when other people come, I just think it would be better if you guys would be a little more kinder to the people, even when they're nasty. And I'm not going to say that they're not nasty, they do get nasty when you're like, I heard somebody called one of y'all a real dirty man. And I said, you shouldn't have said that, that's not fair. You know, yeah, but you guys, you gotta, you gotta, you know, kind of suck it up and not let them do the best to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to say.
Just from a legal standpoint, I just want to respond to one thing that
What is the legal?
Charter member Mars stated, she was talking about the stipend and the salary. And I just, I don't know whether the intent is that the salary will supplement the stipend or be in lieu of. But I would just point out that if it's going to be in lieu of the stipend, and that's not my decision, but if it's going to be in lieu of, then you can't simply make it the same amount. Because the stipend is an expense reimbursed and it's not taxable. A salary will be taxable.
That's right.
So you cannot say fifteen thousand stipend equals fifteen thousand salary. It's got to probably be at least twenty. But again, maybe the intent is to have both, not my decision. But just don't think they're equivalent in terms of impact or dollar value expenditure, that's all.
Tom, and then I do want to give the city council, we do have a public hearing tomorrow, so you got to give it to one of them tonight.
And we'll see you tomorrow.
And you can talk all you want.
For three minutes.
Not really, but you know. Okay, Tom.
Well, I just want to say, I really like that we had a lot of diversity of discussion. And it's really interesting to see what people have to say. And I hate to see a process like this where we're literally designing government for however long it takes for the next charter revision commission to come together for people to take personally, right? And that was never the attempt. I'll just tell you what, when it comes to city council, I wanted to say. Diversity of opinion, which I think we're getting through those minority party, and I do support expanding it to six as I did last night. And the other thing was to make it stronger. And in my view, I thought making it stronger meant including those at-large people. It meant making a stronger office of legislative services and giving it more power. It means for me at least, paying council members an appropriate salary with a quality increase. And it meant fewer of them, usually stronger voices. I don't think the council members in Boston, to use Mars' example, are weak. In fact, they are stronger because there are fewer of them and they represent a lot more people. They have more authority when there are fewer of them. So that was my viewpoint. I want to help create a stronger council. I think this council wants to be a stronger council. And that's why I thought they're going adding the at-large members and doing fewer. I'm open to the other idea. I just think that fewer is better. I think they're stronger. And we set it out into the future so that it wouldn't affect any current people. We're talking about not this council election, not the next council election, the next council election. Like, far out. Because we don't want to affect any current people. We're just trying to think about what's the best system. And it's, it's not personal to anybody. I just leave it at that. And I have great respect for the people that are in this room. And that's why I do advocate for salary now. Well, there are council members, by the way, I just want to express this, not all of them are on the same page on the pay versus stipend issue. The council pay issue started with some council members, but not everyone's on the same page.
They're going to have time to talk about that.
And I would say, look, whatever we come up with as a draft, this is not the last day. This is not the last opportunity. It's okay, we vote on something that ends up not living at the end of the day or gets changed or the council provides comments saying that they don't like it because they think we should do this instead. That's great, that's cool. That's how the process is designed, literally how the statute reads. We should not be afraid of this process. And I feel like some people are worried, like, whatever we do today, oh my God, we're stuck there. That's not so.
Look, we reconsidered it, so.
We reconsidered it last night.
Um, and we opened it up so that we can have more of this discussion. John, did you have something?
Just before we hear from the council members, I'd like to say it's nice to see you guys here and involved in the process. Maybe that's what it took to bring you here. It's great, we appreciate you.
And unfortunately, I don't know all of who all of you are. So at the end, I need to get your names for that, okay?
Don't say your names when they clear.
Oh.
We'll make it easy.
Good evening. My name is Denise Telmoi. I've been on the council for many, many years, thirteen, fourteen, maybe fifteen years. I was there for thirteen and left and lost my seat and came back. So I've seen a lot of things there from being on the council. How well we work together when the time and need is there, that we're there. What everyone needs to understand is that each district is different, you know? So a lot of people maybe in the East End, East Side or West Side or wherever, might not know who I am because I'm South Indian. But I myself and my partner and all my partners that I've had through the years, and I can call them, Letitia Cologne, Anderson, Ayala, you know, Jack Bamber, I've worked with all of them and we worked together and we did our job. Today, I work with Mr. Jorge Cruz and we're doing our job. People who don't know us, normally it's people who don't vote in general. The voters know us. The voters that are down by University Avenue, Park Avenue, Seaside Village, Aranstan, you know, all over, Norman Street, College Street, you know, they know us, you know, we're from the community, we're in the community. So it's not like we are not known people. And from the time that I've been on the council, I was on the council there with Sue Bradley, love you, still love the stuffed pepper soup. Talk about it all the time, all the time. But I just want to say, I think that we as council people, you know, we need to get that recognition that we deserve from everyone. Not just from the voters or people who vote for, from this commission. You need to understand who we are, what we are and the work that we do and the way that we feel. The young man said that he's from here and he's from Brooklyn, I'm from here and from Austin. You know, so I know the flavor, you know, Mr. Charlie Rango. He was one of the first people I ever did anything with on a political level. Cheryl Chisholm, when I was a young girl, I, they did camps and everything and all that stuff, I was there alone with her, you know? So Percy Sudden, different people of that nature there. The same way that I'm involved here in Bridgeport, Connecticut, is the same way I was involved there. And some of the same stuff that goes on here, some of the same stuff that went on there. But people got paid, people did their job, they had assistance, they had everything else that was going on there. So there was always coverage. There's no coverage here in the city of Bridgeport for our council people. We don't have our own aides or anything. And I will see you tomorrow.
Can we ask thirty second questions? Is that okay?
I will see you tomorrow.
This is kind of, because we can't do it during public speaking.
Okay, we'll do a minute question.
Uh, I have a question for you, Protempo, you know who it is. You are one of the first people ever on the council to advocate for pay as opposed to the stipend.
Still do.
Do you still feel that way?
I still do. But I have other council members who don't want it and I'm one of them people, I don't get into nobody's head.
So you don't feel strongly about it?
Do I feel strongly about what?
About whether or not you should get paid or a stipend.
Oh, I think that, no, I'm not going to say that. I think that we should get paid. The National League of Cities, we went to, I went to so many of them. And I've heard so many people from different states saying different things about the pay, even about getting insurance, even about being on the council for two years and still getting something though, you know? I think that it would be beneficial to the council people. But it's not just a I, it's a we, you know? So I have to go with what my other council counterparts believe and, and I say.
Thank you.
You took two minutes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Deportina represents the one thirty ninth district, which is the east end of Bridgeport, Stratford Avenue, Camilo Avenue, which is Boston Avenue, a portion of it because it's the district. So a portion of it is Councilwoman Pereira's district. Let me just start off by thanking you all for your time because you are volunteering and you're taking away from your family. So I want to thank you all for doing a great job in what you're doing. Secondly, the reason I came was because I heard the rumor, as our John Marshall Lee stated, of individuals trying to cuff council members. And I don't know who the individual was, but I, I'm going to address as a whole. I was elected to the council in twenty thirteen, lost my seat in twenty twenty, re-elected again by the constituents in the district that I live in. So we are elected by our constituents. And through my trials and through the, everything that happened with me, I was re-elected back to office, which that tells me that my constituents believe in me. And I say all that to say that our mayor, our administration, the staff that works for the city of Bridgeport does not know the work that we do unless you come to our district and you beat those streets with us to know. My recommendation to each and every last one of you all that sit around this table is check the records in the city clerk's office to see what elected official is doing and what elected official is not. And that will better tell you, do you need two or do you need one? Because that's the best record you're going to have. I'm effective, I was effective when I was off the council. I'm going to be effective if I come off again this year. It's, I don't care about a title, I'm going to be effective. But I have to tell you that one council member will not succeed in any district. I don't care if you don't have any violence, one council member will never be successful in your district. And that's all I want to say. I will see you all tomorrow. Once again, thank you because we truly do appreciate your volunteer and time. This is a lot of work, a lot of, I've been looking on teams and I'm behind, I'm like, I think packet number three. This is a lot of, I'm way behind, so you guys are what, seven? Eight, 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 not like.
Can I get a thirty second question? My question for Ania, one of the things that we didn't hear you on last time when we were interviewing council members is where you stand on the minority representation in the hour.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay.
I'm in favor of it. I think the idea that John presented at the table this evening is the best idea that I've heard yet.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, John Marshall Lee.
No, that's the same question I was going to ask. I'm curious as to your position on how we can get more people not aligned with the small D, what with the large D Democratic Party, open and operating in the city. And it's, there are multiple ways, but this is one of them that we inserted at that level. Do you have any recommendations for these at-large? I'd love the council to tell us over the next week, put in your thoughts as to how you phrase, if we choose to go in that direction, how you phrase the general, the difference between district reps who have a dual duty and the at-large members who have the specific duty. It's incidental what happens in the district in which they live. Thank you.
I would also add that after we're done with this, why don't you all come and walk each district? Doesn't have to be election time, walk and just see what's out there. The need in the community, the need in the community. And to our commissioners' point, I mean, Keats pantry, which is in my district, they just lost two freezers on Monday. They had carts and carts loaded of frozen foods that, because the truck had just delivered. I had to start making phone calls because it's my responsibility as an elected official. A hundred and thirty people a day, they feed and you're going to let this food go back? I didn't put it on my stipend card because I didn't want Mark to cite me on it because, yes. But I made phone calls and we got a freezer today, we're getting a freezer tomorrow, but these are the type of things that we do. There was a big fire in PT. Do you know how many people we donated to? Joe Calipole, the number of beds that he bought, but this is what we do, we share all our referrals to the things that are needed in the city.
I, yes, your question, go ahead.
Question and I have a question.
Quick question, ma'am, Chair. So my question to you is, in light of what you just said, is it feasible to believe and is necessary for city council people to be paid a salary so they can be free to do those kind of things? Because you couldn't have did that if you were at work.
Well, but the salary is for, for their personal, it's the stipend that provides.
No, but if she didn't get a salary, she wouldn't be free to do that. She's fortunate, she owns a business. If she had to be at work, she wouldn't be able to do that. But if she was working for the people and getting a salary, she would be free twenty-four seven to do things like that.
Or that's why you tag team with the other person in your district.
They both, but if they both, they both would have to work.
Let me just say this.
Or more than.
I could care less about a salary because guess what? Is it my heart? So whatever I do for the city of Bridgeport, I don't care, they don't have to pay me because I'm going to still do it. Because guess what? I'm going to find a way, if there's a will, there's a way, I'm always finding a way.
But, but, but the question is, is a logical question.
It is.
If you, I work two jobs, that's why I'm not here every time you need me, I got to work two jobs. I take care of my family. My wife works part-time, I work full-time, I'm a man, I take care of my family. If I was city council, I could not do that, working those two jobs and working four jobs.
It'd be difficult.
It would be difficult. So that's the point that I was making, that's why I asked you that question.
But to your point, I don't care about the money. Money, we all know money's the root of all evil. If it's here, you don't need to see the money's money.
So I'm talking about your time, you'd be free to do it.
So, so you say that all city council members provide reports to the city council office for what they get?
Any, any work that we do, so say, for example. So say, for example, any resolutions, any ordinances, anything that we implement or anything that we fight for should be in our city clerk's office. You'll be able to keep a track, just like our attendance.
What about what you just said as far as the work's looking and how it's...
Oh, no, that's not there. That's coming from us, that's coming from us. But if you would like a report of it, I'll be more than happy to give it to you.
Hey, I'm curious to know what, I mean, I can understand from what my district says, but overall, I don't know.
I'm giving you the light of everything I do in my district, and I'm sure that all other council members that are here can do the same.
Do you think that, um, do you think that the work is, will the work show that there is a need for two?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're done with questions.
So, I am Maria Inez Bajin, District 137, which is the east side, Zeno, 06608. So when, when individuals wonder, what do we do, what do we not do? How do we spread ourselves, right? Where there are fifteen thousand residents in the 06608 zone. This is Monday night, Monday night at nine o'clock. Tell me who does this? Hola, mayor! Hola, I'm talking to the Spanish. There were the people included up in this thing. Okay, there's a meeting, NRZ, right, on the east side. And I said, I hope you can come. Then I went on to share my pain, my concern, my sorrow about 06608 and the residents in our district. I said, Mayor, on Jane Street and East Main Street, there were men and women, all dropped off. Then I went and I said, Mayor, on Jane and Brook Street, a woman and a baby in a carriage, right? And two men sitting on the church steps, and they sure were not praying. Okay? Then on Arctic and Brook Street, an older woman, and I'm telling you, an older woman, with two men exchanging drugs. This is all visible on a Sunday, that I am coming from church, and this is what I witnessed. And then we wondered, do we need two council people? Yes, we do. We need two council people. And I'm sorry that the, it's only Democrats, but you need to also blame the other party because they should work in, in, in the community and bring individuals that can run. My husband's a Republican, I'm a Democrat. You should hear the fight. Again, it's important.
I wanna, I wanna know who won.
This has Harvey Smart.
You know, and you mentioned stipend, you stipend salary. Listen, that salary to me is not important. Keep the stipend. Keep the stipend. We don't, we do not need fifteen thousand dollars stipend. And I have to also recognize somebody here today, one of our council people. Who in the world, council people, or even any one of you, you get a call from somebody at eleven thirty at night, would you pick it up?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, somebody money. But I was, I was taken aback. I went with the seniors to an outing. We got home at ten o'clock. And I see the little old lady walking up and down the street. And I, and I always wait till everybody's going home before I take off to my house. Here's the little old lady, she goes, they took my car. I said, what do you mean they took your car? She goes, yes, I parked it there. And I go, you sure? So we go in, yes, they took her car. I didn't, I didn't even know what to do. But anyway, we went to where we needed to go. Then they tell the little old lady, you have to pay two hundred and eighty-five dollars in cash. We do not take credit cards, we don't... So I said to her, listen, I am going to use my, my little skills here. I put my little badge on, I thought it was gonna work. Went to the site, the man said, no, we told you, we do not take money. Eleven thirty at night, I called Alfredo Castillo, because I didn't even know what to do. He got on the phone, and he started calling individuals. And the man said, listen, I told you, we don't take your credit card. I have to thank Alfredo because, you know what? He pulled through, he came, so that the little old lady was able to get her car. And how did that was paid for? With my stipend card. I paid two hundred and eighty-five dollars with my stipend card to help a little old lady get her car out of the lotto.
Can I add to that? She also paid someone's bill who was going to have the house foreclosure to, to give her time to solve the issue because they said that the person had not paid the bill. The person had paid the bill. She paid it with her stipend card. And after, gave her time to stop the foreclosure process so that she can work on the issue.
So again, this is what I'm saying, that it's, it's there. When you say we fight, we defend our residents, that we stand up? Yes, right now I am fighting East Main Street because they wanna build seventy-four units, no parking required. Okay? I hope that each of you that are here, and bring a friend, bring ten out of here, we need to fill that chamber with as many people to send a message to the zoning, to the OPEC people, whoever the heck it is, to stop the nonsense and allow parking for those individuals because they can't think of your mom, somebody elderly that has to walk three blocks away.
I could just say one point. As you said earlier, Councilwoman, that you favor the stipend. The examples you just gave are the best argument for why you should get a salary and not a stipend. Because stipends, as much greater scrutiny, as you know with the finance department, it's a warrant qualifies, it's an expensive reimbursement. Salary frees you up from any of those concerns.
Your mind's really confused. To me, a stipend is used for city business. A stipend is personal business.
No, it's not. What's talked about here is constituent services. It's not reimbursement for unnecessary expenses as councilors can't find a computer to do your job. It's wantable, it's not personal gain, but it's the type of thing that if you get a salary, you can use it wherever you want. You can take somebody to dinner, you can pay somebody's bill for their towing. It gets rid of the bookkeeping, which the finance department rips its hair off when determining whether eligible matters are eligible for stipends. You avoid all that concern with the salary. You can spend your salary however you choose.
But that doesn't mean that that salary is gonna be invested back to the people. I changed the language.
The purpose of a stipend is not to invest to the people. It's not a community service fund. It's an expense reimbursement for necessary expenses associated with the council.
But help me, is that not? Is that not?
That's a decision for the finance department. It's not a charitable, it's not a fund.
I do have a question that says we're in the middle of this. This is not for us to be deciding. This is an IRS question. But I respectfully, to the council members, please, please, and I know you have great stories about how you spend your stipends. Please do not tell your stories about how you spend stipend on camera because you may be in violation of IRS regulations with some of the things you're saying. With all due respect, I don't want to get anybody in trouble. And I just love listening to your questions. But I did a question for the council.
We have Tom, and then we have Steve, and then we will have another council person.
You mentioned your partner, very much, he's a Republican. I'm just curious where you stand, I don't think I got to ask you last time, on including some members that can come from the minority, including at-large, so that underrepresented voices in the city, like your husband, might have a chance to have a seat on the council.
Well, I would say keep the twenty and the six, and let them balance it out as, as you wish. Because even I have spoken to Republicans that say, get involved. I mean, who does that?
Okay, but you're not opposed to the at-large?
No, no, I am not opposed, no.
I want to go back to, she raised the issue that as a councilwoman, our job is to assist the constituency in our community, right?
Right.
She did, but I'm saying, what is the difference of doing that than she having a community gathering, that she buying lunch, or she buying coffee, or whatever, and go meet with our constituents and share information, which she's supposed to do? What's the difference between that? You're doing the same service?
I don't know what you're talking about right now.
Okay, let me go back. She assists a constituent in our community, in that situation, right? That's part of our service duty as a councilwoman. Now she has a meeting, that she, by the same constituents, they're all virtually about coffee, pastry, and whatever it is, they're gonna have a meeting. There is the same money.
I think Tom had that was correct. We ought not to be getting into those issues. One is community outreach and communicating with your constituents.
But what are you trying to argue is what I'm trying to make around.
Look, but now Mike was saying that you can't spend money on your constituents.
These are IRS issues.
But let me ask, it's gonna be the same IRS issue if she go to the senior center, another meeting at the senior center, and she bought coffee, pastry, whatever.
See, it's entirely different. That's communicating with your constituents and having some refreshments associated with it. But I'm not making that decision. That's an IRS issue. The city tells the council people, you're responsible for the tax consequences of how you spend your stipend. So this isn't the place to have that conversation. All I'm saying is, you avoid all those issues if you have a salary. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate your...
And you can oppose, by the way, that's fine. One or the other, you can do both if you choose.
All right, we have, and please give me...
I'm gonna do it very quickly, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna do all this stuff. Jeanette Harren, 133rd District. My colleague said about ordinances and resolutions, not everybody does a ton of ordinances and resolutions. We're out there working, we work together. If you see, we called each other, we work together. Maria Valier and I, we took a homeless person, that she didn't, she had dementia, she wasn't homeless, she forgot where she lived. Eleven o'clock at night, we're looking around, calling for family. We took that woman home to her bro, her son. It took us four hours. We didn't want to bring it to the police, but we work together all the time. If you see fighting on that council, that's only a few individuals that are constantly fighting, but that doesn't happen with these groups here. You know, stipend and a salary, I don't want a salary. I think it's unnecessary because I work 24/7, and yes, I have a job. I get calls at two o'clock in the morning, I get calls at three o'clock in the morning, and I'm wanting if something goes out. I've had people put out of their homes at three thirty in the morning. I'm out there trying to find them a place to live, or even putting them in a hotel. And I do it with my own money. So these are things that we do. I work with the homeless, many of us do. We're out there feeding them, we're out there trying to get them housed. These are things that a lot of people don't see. I mean, unless you see it on the news, and who really cares about the news? But you all are in different districts, and some of you know what a lot of us do, and some of you don't. But you have to be concerned with the fact that we are here. I can't do it alone. And my partner and I, whenever I get a call, I'm emailing him, he's emailing me. We work together and we continue to work together. Today I got a call of a city vehicle flying down Madison Avenue near the school. Right away, I'm on the phone with Public Facility, gave them the truck number and said, can you deal with this? I'm on the phone with the police all the time, Public Facility. So don't disparage what we do, and I'm not saying you are, but you know, Tom works for the administration, and so does Mark. And you know, they're fighting their own battle. We want to make sure we're serving each and every one of you and the constituents that live in your district.
We, we did not hear any of the comments we're hearing tonight.
Oh, I know what it is.
Pardon me?
I know.
At the third public hearing, your proud council president is not present tonight. I don't know whether that's a dislocation, or letting everybody speak up. But again, things were not heard. Isn't it interesting, I, as someone who comes and speaks in front of you all the time, imagine an audience where you could have just hear us talk and we don't respond to you? That's...
That's the rules, committee.
Those are the rules that you've adopted. So the public has, the public, our fellow citizens, our neighbors, those of you who are blessed or covering your heart because that's where, where you are investing time, money, hours untold to make sure that, that human governance happens, okay? It's not politics. So we're, we're, we're trying to get on the same page. We needed your input, okay? And so how do you feel about adding twenty plus? Have you been asked that?
I would never ask, that conversation never came to a lot of us.
No, but we only heard about it today.
If you could get the minority parties to run, you see, in our city, you have to get the minority leaders to come to the table and support their candidates. Because I know in my district, sometimes Republicans run. I'm sitting with them at an election, helping them, trying to get people. They have to want to run for office. And I'm not in a belief that you have to hand everybody a position. I mean, it would be nice in those positions, we have independent party that's getting stronger. We have a Republican party that is not that strong, but maybe this election, maybe they will be, which would be nice. I'm in agreement to have it.
And we have twenty thousand unaffiliated people. They're not independents, they're just unaffiliated, and they don't, and, and, and do they understand civics? Why don't we, why don't we make an effort on the council to woo the unaffiliated? That's all.
Well, John, I agree. But I tell you, in my district, I have affiliates vote for me, I have Democrats vote for me, because I have Republicans vote, because I go and pursue them. I don't just campaign for the Democrats. I work for everybody, so it, I, each district is different.
I'm aware. Yeah, and I respect who said, John, because like honestly, some of this stuff I have never heard too. I would have thought for sure that most council members wanted to pay. I've heard that none, with the exception of two people, Councilwoman Pereira, for a good reason, and you, you were one of them. Yeah, you don't like paying, you can insist on that.
And you're one of the same.
And the, the, can you explain the council, though? Your concern was very specific about the fact that you work in addition to being on the council. It affects your...
Well, I'm glad you came back into the room because I really appreciate that. I'm born and raised in New York, so Brooklyn is where I grew up. Brooklyn is where I learned how to be a politician. So council is definitely different there. They get paid, they have benefits, they have staff. So you want to try to give us a salary without, now you're gonna have to worry about benefits because you're gonna have to do Murph with the South with that. And how are you gonna handle that? Because that's gonna be more money than cost to hear. That's what, I don't like it. The fifteen thousand affords me the ability to travel and learn what I learn. It affords me the ability to become more of an expert on homelessness as I've been. So that salary is, to me, is unnecessary. I actually work, and I'll be continuing to work. But if people need it, that's, that's, you know, why they're advocating, I guess. I don't know, I haven't talked to them about it. I don't think it's necessary because I work 24/7, I was elected by the people. And if they call me, I'm available. So I don't look at it as, you know, it's an inconvenience because even at work, I'll take a call, and I'll respond when I can, but I tell everybody, text me. But I'm out there talking all the time. So there's a difference. And...
Well, I think good consistency, but I want you to say you're, you're concerned about tax liability and other issues like that, which I respect.
Well, I don't have the floor, but you better add me to that because I've never been here.
That's right, I don't understand. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I asked for a salary because throughout the years, I have seen where the stipends has not been enough money to do the things that need to be done for our constituents. And I know that all of us don't work, and some of us that don't work cannot go into our pockets and do things for our constituents. and do things for our constituents when we need to and we want to. Yes, I would want a salary, but knowing me, who I am, and the person that I am, my salary will still go towards doing for other people that's in need. So I wouldn't be using my money out of my pocket. You have to go back into history here in Bridgeport in regards to why the stipends
We need to be talking about the
You need to do that. And I'd love to say that.
I, we do want to
Okay. My name is Alfredo Castillo, I'm the councilman of the 136th.
I can't hear you. You do have to speak louder for the mic.
All right, I'm Alfredo Castillo, I'm the councilman of the 136th. I've been elected six terms, will be 12 years, and we're running again this year. Um, it's a lot, I'm, I'm a unique council person. I've been retired since I've been 40. I do this full-time. I'm in the city at nine o'clock, I drop off my daughter, I come straight in here and I work. A lot of council people, they need something, they call me. Hey, Alfredo, you do this, I, I don't mind doing the work because it's a team effort. There's 20 of us. To, to bring it down to 10, I, I, that's the reason we're here. We all respond to each other, you know, what happened, blah, blah, blah. But what it, what it does, it really affects the minority population. It's, it's the people in these districts, the 139s, the 138, 137, 136, 135th. Denise Taylor's district, there are more minorities in the city that it was never been here. This is history. When you have eight Hispanic council people and seven African-Americans on the council with a council president Hispanic, that's unheard of. It took us almost 20 years to get here. 20 years to get here. And all we want to do is just want to be at the table. And everybody's talking about corrupt, corrupt. It ain't corrupt, you know what it is? It's relationship with people. We know it, we know where the people are. And they ain't, oh, I ain't going to give you nothing, they don't know you. Or we bring the turkeys, we bring the, when they had no masks, I had the masks. I, I, I went to other council people, here, there's masks to help the people. It wasn't me, I got it for free. It ain't mine to keep, none of that we have is us. When we came in these positions, we came to serve. We're, we're serving, we served the community. We never asked, yeah, the stipend card, but sometimes we spend the money. Sometimes we got to wait one month to get, to get a reload. Or we have to call, hey man, I'm short, help me out, go another 500 there, just to make me survive. That's, this is the game, they give us. This is what we play, the game with the stipend. Forget about the stipend, that's our job to do that. I'm saying that we keep the 20, put the six at large, because we need help. We, we're dealing with 150,000, 150,000 people residing in Bridgeport. You have 42% Hispanic, 32% African-American, you got 4% Asian, and you got 18% Caucasian. We're the majority, we ain't minorities no more. And all we want to do is sit at the table and every time we move up, they move the line. They sentence us, we get out the vote, oh, they're criminals. They're, they're doing fraud. It's corruption. There ain't no corruption here because there ain't no money here. We're just trying to help the people and it makes our job more harder. And yeah, we fight because we want to fight for what we think is better for our district. But look who's here. This was phone calls last night. Hey, hey, people, hey, this ain't right, you got to show up. That's why we came here, because we were like, we didn't even know this. And sometimes they play the game, maybe I'm not educated, maybe I didn't go to law school. But you, show me how to read that, teach me that. What does that mean? So I have to give you a good answer, but don't discredit us because we're minorities. You make us look like we're the criminals. And all we try to do is help up people. They sentence us to jail, they sentence us to court, because we get out the vote. Who benefits from that? The administration benefit from that, not us. They tell us go get out the vote. And we all say, hey, this is the team, we got to work together. Who benefit from that? They do, they got the jobs, we don't got nothing. But we, what we saying is, come on, man, give us a shot, give us a chance. Don't discredit us because we minorities. But if you're racist, don't be racist with us, be racist with God. Because he made us like that. What I'm saying is, come on, man, let's, let's get it right. We control the city. It's our turn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you for your service. I greatly appreciate it. And thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I only, I'm going to keep it short. My thing is I ran for city council because I care. That's the bottom. I knew that we're not going to get paid. You know, I'm a man in long-term recovery. I grew up a PT bar, had a 32-year heroin habit. We have a lot of chaos in my life and my family. I've been cleaned out for 22 years by the grace of God. And with the homeless, Anita, Denise, Maria, everybody here, really. I have a lot of passion and compassion and empathy for what I do. That's the thing about the stipend, that's, that's your role in to me. What I don't like about the stipend is that it's like we got to be like little kids. We got to call daddy or mommy and say, hey, how much do I got left? How much do I got left? Because I have used money the stipend to for homelessness. I bought homeless people clothes with stipend, socks. When I couldn't get it just with the, um, Del Calico or Anita or, and she gives out the, we do our job. My point is this, I do agree with 20 council members and with the five or six at large. Why do I say that? It's because I believe in fairness and democracy. Our Republican friends and independent friends don't have a fair chance. They don't have a fair chance. Because we as Democrats, we basically monopolize the whole system here. And it is unfair that they have to wait until November to run. So I think that we need to change the status and allow them to register to run in the primary against Democrats and Republicans. And then we go ahead and fight it out. It's fair, it's equal. Because that's why I feel ashamed that we get the bad rap that we always win. Well, we win because we do, as far as I'm concerned, they easy, now, we do our job in our district. And my thing is about fairness. Yes, that's what I wanted to say. John?
My brother, my friend Jorge, um, you have an independent mind. You've been, we've been working together and with Denise's support towards self-governance by, by folks who are being subsidized by all the taxpayers in HUD property to govern themselves. So I've gotten to know you, I know what's going on in the district. The relationship that I have with Denise has changed. It's good. I also will call brother of Alfredo because I've worked with him, I've gotten to know him, okay? Uh, but for all the, all the good that's happening, this communication today was very helpful. To, um, a rumor that you're going to have a bonus veto a week ago of something we hadn't even dealt with was, was, was inappropriate. I guess that's the fancy words you say. So, uh, it, I don't, I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just saying, hey, folks here are trying to balance this out. Let's see, let's move towards the five extra people or six extra people. Let's see, let's see. Uh, and I'd love to have each, as I invited before, I'd love to have council people tell us what they see that role will be because it's unstructured at the moment, except that they cover the waterfront, the entire waterfront. Okay? And, and what adjustments will be, be needed to be made. Because people who disagree with that are going to talk about the extra expense. They're going to talk about the necessary building in, and perhaps the systems, the electronic systems in this, in the council chambers that still are not, not heard and are, and it's hard to hear what's going on in the meeting. And we're, people doing the history are not present at each time. So communication in the city is not as high as it could be. And, and you all go to these, uh, committee meetings out of town and they bring new ideas to the city and people are using those well. Um, we don't need to talk about money anymore tonight. Uh, but we do need, we do need, because we spent more time tonight talking about stipends and salaries. So we did even more. Anyway, God bless.
I just want to say, thank you, and Madam Chair, I just want to say that lastly again, uh, just, just add, uh, again, I, I agree with the 20 and the at-large. Where I'm coming from is about fairness and real democracy. Five, six, you know, uh, I believe in that. As far as salary, I mean, I have a beautiful job, I have a wonderful job. I've worked with men and women who live and some suffer with mental illness and substance abuse. I have a dream job, so to speak. I'm not leaving my job. I'm not leaving my job for $20,000. I keep my full-time job. I got to be real, right, you're realists? Got to be real. But we're still doing our job. Two council members, Denise Taylor, you see the lady right there, has a wealth of knowledge and experience. When I don't understand something, I call onto her. She get out that bullhorn and she makes it happen. So two of us, but anyway, lastly, the other thing that I want to thank you, having this meeting, tomorrow I cannot come, I go to school two days, Thursdays, and I paid too much damn good money to go to school. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have, okay, Tom?
Let me go. Oh, listen, Mike.
I want to say, so you just have seven.
I'm going to just go stick on topic. Richard Ortiz, 135th District, okay? My first time, so, and my first time acting, I'm a district. I'm not going to speak about salaries, but when I get it, it's like, yeah, because trust me, 28 years, that's the force he's giving me, a whole lot.
Oh, you're good.
Can you hear you, Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you very much, Anita, I appreciate that. But we are going to talk about our 20 council members, but unfortunately y'all thinking about adding the six at large. Probably y'all understand, and I talked to my own constituents about this. They decide who they want in office, they vote. Then you want to add six on top of the 20, well, actually makes no sense to them because they be like, well, why would she give a working party 20 if they don't even try to do anything? I don't, I don't even give it because a lot of them wouldn't even vote for the working party. Especially when they came in my district, where they got totally tramped. They didn't even do it, they didn't even register over 100. In the general. So I don't even know where would y'all even get the idea to add something in there that even Republicans came out to vote for me. The guy I had, only, only had 120. So y'all not even making no sense, and I got a lot of Republicans in my district. So I don't even understand this so-called minority order, whatever y'all trying to ball it. We, I don't have no clue. Y'all should try and come and walk in my district. Because I walk with you, I ain't a problem. Tom knows, because I did it a long time. Publicity, listen, I work 65 hours a week and I still do it. I complicated my life and I still do it. My wife tried to bring my inactive body, but I don't have enough time with her, but I still do it. So I don't understand why people say they didn't even get a full year councilman. My phone, they there, their rings, I still, my partners, I appreciate their help, my colleagues, which in turns I helped them if they asked me to. But, and
What, oh, so just to me?
I don't guess the at-large benefit, they were to ask you a question.
We, salary, you said now?
The salary, listen, it doesn't bother me one way or another. In other words, I'm still going to help people regardless. Most of my stipend goes towards constituents, carry on, which is shouldn't do. And I'm probably getting myself in trouble because I arrested. Okay, because they do complain about certain things, just had to hear it.
Tom?
No, I respect what you said, because you've been consistent on this point. You do not like to have, and that's why I love you on this, because not even all the council members, not everyone's on the second page and stuff. So I just want to be clear about your argument. Your argument is, in our city, that the minor parties get so little of the vote, even in the general election, that why are we even bothering? Is that your point, the chairman?
Minor, minor party gets a little what?
That the minor parties, even in the general elections, when Republicans and potentially independents or working families do run, they get such a low percentage of the vote, even in the general elections when they're on the ballot, that why are we even bothering? I just want to understand the argument.
Because remember, Republicans have their own primary, others don't.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, does anyone else have a question?
Thank you.
And just to let you know, it's 7:45, we do have other orders to handle.
I'm just trying to understand, because I came in late, I have a school closing that affects my constituents today. Am I right that we've been debating for over an hour and there's not even a motion on the floor? Is that correct?
Well, there was a motion to reconsider the vote, yes, so we had a long discussion.
So you haven't even voted on the motion till reconsidered?
We did, we did.
But there's no current motion on the floor?
Because we wanted to have a discussion.
Okay, um, I just want to say, and this is one of the worst meetings I've ever been to in my life, okay? We got him acting like the 14th Commissioner, offering testimony as if he's a commissioner. By the way, he knows this, we've had this discussion at school board meetings. I would say, Mark, are you the 10th School Board Member? He's here to get legal advice upon request by commissioners. He's not here to offer testimony and so forth. Third, we just got lectured about how terrible we are, but people are fighting for us to get paid. If we're terrible, why should we be paid? I mean, right now, if you give every one of these council people $20,000, including the additional six, that's over half a million dollars a year, but we don't have money for our schools. By the way, if you look at your document, they made us as unclassified employees, which means we're going to get health benefits, fringe, vacation, a holiday. Uh, so you understand like a big number? This is going to come, yes it is, I, I checked with the legal counsel. If we're unclassified, we're like every other unclassified employee and we're entitled to the fringe benefits that go with it. Um, we just spent 30, 40 minutes talking about stipends. What authority does this commission have over stipends? None. It's by, it's by city ordinance. The only people who can change an ordinance is us. Even if you pay us, you can't force us to give up our stipend. And now we're talking about paying people, which changes people's tax brackets. Whereas the stipend, we get to use, like for instance, I'm having a big bet at August Mountain Homes tomorrow because those people have all their cars towed, MBTS people are not buying a legal tower. And they arrested him and the police detective is wrapping up the case and I want them to have a chance to submit their receipts to ultimately get reimbursed, okay? That's something I've been working on. I'm, I'm, they're closing, I'm going to have one elementary school in my district. Okay, so I'm working on that. I dropped everything I had to do today to help somebody. And I don't know why I did that. So I'm really aggravated.
Yeah.
I'm sorry? And I, I really think this has been atrocious.
Hey, can you come? Sheriff?
Terribleness, go ahead. Well, everybody knows
I can't hear you.
Everybody knows how long I've been on the council. I'm on in there for close to 20, 22 years, okay? So we all know that. And let me tell you something, I started with Fabrizi. And Fabrizi, I was called in the office with my partner, who was still on the council with me, and we started our situation together. So, and I, and so Fabrizi said to me, this is my motto and this is going to be your motto. He said, there are people that in your district that are going to call specifically you. There's going to be people in your district that are going to call specifically you. Then there's at times when you may work together. And that's the way it's been for me for the last years. This week, let me tell you something, thank God I have a great husband, okay? Because I spent a lot of time this, this week doing council stuff. I don't have, I don't care about titles, I don't care if you take my title away. I've been through it all, so I don't really care. Because my job is uncalled, that I felt uncalled in the Lord, to serve this, to serve the people of the city of Bridgeport here. And as long as I'm sitting in that seat, I'm going to do the best possible way that I can. And I, you know how I know? Because I, you, everybody knows I'm also a breast cancer survivor. And during my time when I was recuperating from breast cancer, just as well as, um, my, my, some of my colleagues here, I went with my drains and I fought things, I looked in my pocket and I fought what I had to fight, the North End going, or if I have to, then I would fight through the city. That is what we're called to do if we really care about where we're going. And that's why also you And that's why also you need 20 people, because this, last week alone, I was like, okay, I have a marijuana dispensary and something else that wants to be put in this district. And these poor people do not know about this on the street. Now I'm figuring, oh my God, I have absolutely two days to get this done. How am I going to do it? Unfortunately, I was able to have another person that was able to do this with me. And I, what I did was I walked three, three streets. And that, and that, and that certified the fact that with the help of somebody that I was able to get help with, the third, that, the three people, I mean, the, the third day, they got on the phone. There was 19 people that ended up fighting for their area. But you need two people to help you. The wealth, the, the wealth, some of the stuff is overwhelming to me. And I've been doing this a long time, and I know what I'm doing. At least I feel somewhat, you know? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have some degrees in certain things, but I, I know to call public facilities. I know to call, you know, this group, I know to call that group, I know to call, and they're very, they're, I have to say, a lot of the people that I've got to be colleagues with in the city, they're very responsive, and they come out and help. But this week alone, let me tell you something. I had dishes piled up in my house for freaking two days, two or three days. Okay? And I'm lucky, I was able, thank God I have a dishwasher. But I mean, I mean, it's, sometimes it's to the point where, and I, and I'm, and I'm retired. Okay? And I'm retired. But I get up in the morning, and I'm like, okay, oh my God, I find people calling me, okay. I sleep with a pad and a pencil next to my bed. Okay, so I, at night, I don't forget, okay, I got to call this person, oh, I got to call this person, oh, I got to call that. Did I call him back? Oh, yes. Roll today? Oh, yes, I did. Okay. And then he calls you back at the same time, and then he wants to have an answer for, okay, okay, he didn't call me back. So, and I give you the information, and then you call, but he goes, he didn't call me back. So, now I have to call him, and then I have to call this person. I mean, this is all time-consuming, you know? I don't get to watch TikTok. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I'm trying to, you know, lighten this, but at the same time, it's, we need 20 people, out of respect. Yes.
No. You, you hit the point. The hammer has driven the nail into the wood soundly. Okay? So, you, you made your point, you made a good point. And we have not been judging council people on hard stops. And that has been generous.
First of all is, I appreciate every single one of you.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Because you all are volunteers, just like we are volunteers, okay? And I appreciate the time that all of you spent in here. And, and, and I thank you for your service, and I thank you for your heart, and thank you for listening to us. I know that sometimes, you, you know, us council people, we get a little riled up, and we get whatever.
Well, thank you for coming out to speak on two occasions to us.
What are your thoughts on, on the at-large minority party?
And I was going to, if I could just pile on to you to answer at once, is you ran 22 years ago as a Republican, before you were Democrat.
And I lost by three outsides in ballots. And since then, I also have run against, Republicans have run against me very strongly. So, don't, don't dissipate the fact that they cannot run, and don't think that they cannot put their, pull their stuff together. So, you know what? They have their party, we have our, we have our party, okay? But I also have Republicans that vote for me too, and I also, and I'm honored with that. I have, um, because I, you know, I've been doing this for a while.
So, have you changed your mind?
What?
On the at-larges with the minority party representation?
That I still, and to be honest with you, I'm still like this with that. And I'm being upfront and honest, because I feel that everybody has the right to run. That my speech was the last time they gave. We live in America. People, soldiers, fight for this country. Everyone has the right to run. Everyone has the right to do what they wanted, what they want to do, okay? I, I don't, I don't, I listen, you want to run against me? God bless you, and I, you know what? That, that's, I honor that, because that's your choice that you want to do. You may think you not agree, but here we are. I don't agree with all the things you're saying, you don't agree with all the good concepts, okay? But that, that's where we are. And as far as the stipend, I'm not even talking about that, because I don't have a mind.
Thank you.
Hey, man, thank you.
May I direct you, guys?
Let me stand and hear what you guys.
Yeah, well, you can.
My motion is to abolish them. There's been a lot of thoughts here. And I think what you said yesterday maybe is a better approach. Obviously, the, it looks like the overwhelming majority doesn't want us to change the stipend. It looks like people want to keep 20, and there's a debate. People that previously were in favor of at-larges really aren't sure anymore, is not sure of the number. I say table the matter. It definitely perks tonight, we're going to have a public hearing tomorrow. But maybe we kick this to the council, they have an opportunity to send back language to us. If they want to change it and incorporate either the stipend change, which does sound like it's going to happen, or the at-large members and how they'd like it structured, they can give that back to us in their revisions. But at this point, given the testimony we had tonight, I don't think it's wise to.
Can I, can I say something? Only because, we only got 15 days, Tom.
15 days after the public hearing, though, so you actually have more than 15 days.
We don't meet until, we only meet once a month, July, July 1st. I mean, July 7th. We don't have time, because if we don't make a decision, it go, this, this is, it's good, it's, would you guys vote? That's what it's going to be.
Why?
So, that's why I'm.
No, no, we'll, we'll, we'll structure the calendar, you'll have more than 15 days, and, you know. It's more time than what we, we got till Monday.
Yeah, we have Monday.
We only meet in one, next month, July, we're timed, let's say. And we have a special meeting.
We definitely almost certain about that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, exactly, no, absolutely, 100%. Because there's other stuff in, in the other sections of the Charter that we. No, no, and under, under this motion, we wouldn't do any damage. My proposal is, if we leave it the way it is, and the council can kick it back to us and say they'd like to change it, but I think we all need to argue each other a little bit more.
Wait, do you mean keeping the, the language as far as the.
No, just the way it is in the existing Charter. Existing Charter. Why do you have to turn this around?
Wait, are people going to, um, we need to vote?
So, I make a motion to table this item indefinitely.
Wait, what's that, indefinitely?
This would mean, well, for the, through Monday, so like, we're just.
So, I would like just to give a date, then, not indefinitely.
Fine, I'll make that, I take back my motion. I make a motion to strike all of the changes that were proposed in the City Attorney's draft in Title A, B, C, and E. So, strike all the new language.
Second.
I second to strike.
Just to be clear, that means the entire Section 1 will remain, of Chapter 5 will remain as.
So, I want to make sure I get this all right.
But the six at-large, you guys have discussed that, right? The six at-large will be discussed?
Yes.
So, the motion. So, the motion is to strike all new language that was presented in Chapter, in Draft 8. In Draft 8. And can you, can you, so, motion to strike all new language of Chapter, of Chapter 5, Section 1?
I make a motion to, yeah, strike the proposed language.
Strike the proposed?
Strike all the proposed language that the City Attorney gave us in the Title of Chapter 5, Section 1, Subsection A, Subsection B, Subsection C, and Subsection.
Of in Draft 8, because that's the last draft we had.
Correct.
Why, why, why we taking on two?
I did, okay.
Wait, sorry?
So, that's second.
So, Tom?
So, now we can have discussion?
We already rejected that one.
Tom? And you are second. So, so now we can discuss the motion? We can discuss the motion.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to clarify on one thing. Tom, so, that was taken out, I think, Section C?
Yes.
The four years?
Yes.
So, who's already taken out?
Yes.
Yeah, we did strike.
The round was four, the four years.
All right.
All right. So, I'm wondering why we don't send this to the council with the language that was proposed, so that they can see the language, and they come up with their own hybrid version, perhaps, rather than just send it the old way and do nothing. At least they would have in there the change. They can reject it, obviously, because that's, that's the whole point of this back and forth. But they, but at least they would have the language that we, we were heading towards.
They have that.
Well, and it, what I'm saying is, we have to present that as something.
Yeah.
We have to present it to them. So, our proposal, if we gave it to them with the language that we worked on, then they can.
Point of, point of order, excuse me, I'm sorry, with all due respect, she can say whatever she wants to say respectfully, please let her just make her motion. Or, or make her point.
So, with that, they can, the City Council, once they, because we're presenting this with a document. If we strike it now, then not one element of this, not one element of this will be considered by them, because we haven't presented it to them. Yes, they could change it if they want to, but they're not being presented with what our initial intent was. And I know that we changed our, our direction this, as we started the meeting. But, but I think to strike it just means, okay, life goes on, and it's business as usual, nothing will change. I do think there should be a consideration by the City Council for change. Many of them agreed with the at-large seats. Many of them agreed with the minority representation. Let it go to them to debate. No, that's. If you hand it to them with none of it, then they just, okay, all right, yes.
So, I, um, I understand what you're saying, I do.
Is it possible?
However, um, that language that was put in there was part of the discussion that, um, honestly, some of us were surprised that it was put in there, because it wasn't the final discussion. It was, it was, it was, to me, I felt like there should have been all of the options that were discussed that day in that section, but instead, there was only one. We had discussion of other topics, we didn't vote on it, and then, all of a sudden, this appears. So, to me, I think that, um, they have Draft 8. They know what's in that, they have the language. I think as a Commission, we are on the table, the motion is to strike that proposed language. Um, and, uh, with, with the understanding that we have discussed the Chapter, the Draft, uh, Ch, uh, sorry, Draft 8 change, changes, um, I would like to see what the City Council would recommend. You have Draft 8, you can look at that, you can make an update to it, and present it to us tomorrow, Saturday. Um, I think Monday's too late.
But I, just as a point of clarification, what I'm talking about is not today and tomorrow. What I'm talking about is we, as a Commission, present, as we are going to, our, um, proposed changes to the Charter, and they have a public hearing, and they have debate about it, and they make their additions.
But we've asked, we've asked.
Excuse me, I'm really sorry, but you guys, that is the process. That's what you have to do. Yes, it is. That's what, that's the process.
But here's the other thing.
Can someone suggest to this man that, that is the process?
It is somewhat of the process. But I also want to say that Civil Service was here with their recommendations. So, we're honest, we're practically saying, the only person actually gave us anything when I was Maria, and Akeem, but it was very short. Um, I would like to see what they would end up drafting similar to what Civil Service did.
There's two differences. Okay. The county, you're, you're basically soliciting 20 separate recommendations, because they don't speak as a law.
Well, they should, then.
They can't without a public, they can't take no action, without a duly noted public. The question that has been raised by Commissioner Martin, it's one that frankly, I wish I knew the answer to off the top of my head, but we can get it very quickly. Here's the question. The statute says, "The Commission shall submit its draft report, including the proposed Charter, Charter amendments, or Home Rule ordinance amendments to the Court, blah, blah, blah." Not later than 15 days after the last hearing, the appointing authority shall make recommendations to the Commission for changes in the draft report that it deems desirable. The question is, can the, can the council recommend changes in the draft report to sections that are not reported to it? In other words, can they say, hey, we love what you sent us, but we want you to go change Chapter 5, Section 1, to do X? Or, or is the council limited to those sections that you forward to them?
But the Commission doesn't want to send that out.
I know, but the question is.
So, you can make this happen.
Well, please, Mark.
They just say one thing.
I just want to point out that last night, we did vote to approve those changes. And I totally respect and understand that we rescinded that, that's perfectly fine. But we did come to an agreement last night. We voted on it, and we agreed to those changes. Everybody did not vote.
Well, that, so that, that.
And then those changes that were made weren't changes that we discussed previously. There was other things there that, we, we did not discuss that.
Well, I, I will take issue with that. We definitely voted, and people were voting. People may have changed a part which everyone is entitled to do, but I will take issue with that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And nobody did not vote. So, wait here, so, we still have.
I think what Mark is saying, we hand them a recommendation of our Charter revisions, and the Chapter, let's say, Chapter 5 regarding the City Council, has no changes from the previous Charter. Then they don't even consider it.
But remember, we're not suggesting that, that we still have the opportunity to include 20 members and six members.
But it's not.
Ultimately, we have, we have the opportunity.
I think that's been out for a while.
We're striking this language, but there will be additional language. I mean, I could just put it, I even have something we could put in.
Well.
No, I, I had been, my hands stood up a while. There was a motion to table that was changed to a motion to strike. Am I right? It sounds like Sue would like to leave the language in. We still got a day or two.
Yes.
To uphold. Why don't we?
We'll have the answer as to whether you need to do that.
And that, and so that?
No, we have.
So, just table it.
You know, like, can we just vote, let's vote on this motion of what Tom just put in, and then if some, like, unless you have a, an amendment.
Actually, if we had, if we had a motion to table, if that motion, that table supersede everything left. Don't worry, it's got, so, and so. So, was there a move to table this item?
No, the last motion.
I did not make a motion. There was a motion, maybe it was second.
I, I, I will say, there's not a motion to table. I, I say then, these, these are going to have to be redrafted, no matter what. We definitely will have to ask the question of whether the statute sues very relevant point. But here's the thing, like, we want to include the six, and we sent it to the council the way it is without any changes. Can the council recommend something that we haven't touched technically? And I think the answer is yes, by the way.
And suppose that the council's supposed to go it up front. And the question is, can they do it at this stage? Can they now come back after they receive a draft report and say, we love what you sent us, but we're sending you back to take a look at Section X? And I think they did.
I think the answer is going to be yes. I think everything's going to be.
But it doesn't say that directly. It says, "You respond to changes in the draft reports." Is the draft report just the sections we're changing, or is it the entire?
We're going to know by Saturday, and if we need to act, we can. So, unless there's a motion to table, I'm just going to. So unless there's a motion to table, I'm just gonna continue to press that we just kill this. We already rejected C yesterday, everyone seems to hate E besides me. And A and B is no longer on the table, we're changing it. So it just seems like this language doesn't work anymore, so I'll keep my.
But does it allow us to, does it allow us to revisit this issue?
Of course, we can do anything we want up until Monday. Up until Monday, we can undo anything.
You also revisit it after the council responds?
Yeah, right, right.
And a motion to table allows that. Why would we?
We rescinded the language and just table it.
Oh, 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 that's interesting. Did the motion to rescind, it was a motion to rescind, not reconsider.
Reconsider, I wrote reconsider.
There was a motion to reconsider, wasn't a motion to rescind, there's a difference.
Reconsider, well, if you reconsider a prior vote, it's back on the table as though you never took it.
Right, okay, that's.
Rescinding, rescinding has to be, reconsidering has to be in the very next section.
Well, then I would say, Mark, to that response, it's.
Yes, this was the next section.
Then if everybody's acting on it's already not there. So all I'm doing is just saying this language that's in the draft, since we've been doing this all along anyway, we don't like it, so.
Here's the other question. The council, the council can make changes to your report. Is your report going to be the entire charter? The changed sections and the unchanged sections? If it includes both, I can certainly think the council can say, you didn't touch this section and we want you to.
Well, that's the question for that.
Right, but I think that makes sense. If the report is, we're not gonna just send them the selection that when we made the changes and all that, so we think you're gonna.
And we should, we should send the council a strike law.
Yes, um, so, so at this point, it's been reconsidered. So whatever was there that we voted on is no longer there. It's gone, so.
So all my motion pertains to is a draft that we got from the city attorney and everything we've done until now is working off the draft. What we're like, good, let's keep that language that she drafted or no, let's not keep that language that she drafted. And like, even if we keep some elements of it, it still needs to be redrafted. So I continue to think the motion's appropriate no matter which view you take.
For the striking?
For the striking of the draft language that we got. That's, just like all of our other votes. Either way, if we end this meeting right now, the language is still not going to the council because it has not been acted on, so it really doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter.
Madam Chair.
We do, um, is all discussion, yes.
Since that we never, since that we never voted on it,
Hold on.
Since that we never changed existing, um, after the members thought as it is, um, it was rescinded for, you know, after a lot of new information. The only thing we should be thinking about now is the minority representation under six of large. That's the only thing we should be discussing right now.
Yes, I agree.
But my motion to strike is to kill the language that's been proposed so that there's nothing there and it's a, we start with the rest. And we will answer the question which Commissioner Martin rightly points out we need to answer by Saturday.
And I, I do, I do, I mean, I did have a come today rule motion, but I don't feel at this time we can bring it up. But it, I do wanna address that motion on Saturday. No, we have a public hearing.
I think the record would be clearer if you passed, uh, Mr. Gardette's motion and then.
Again, the consequence of, it could be, the, the, the consequence of not passing my motion is it still is not going in the council any different than the way it looks now. So really, it's just.
All right, so, um, we'll call those, all those, uh. Oh, sorry.
All right, so just to be clear, what is the actual motion? Motion to strike all the language proposed on pages twenty-three and twenty-four of this draft.
Chapter five, subsection one, eight, I mean, chapter five, section one, subsection A, B, C, and E in draft, um, eight of the proposal of the.
All under, this does not take the issue off the table entirely? So we, we can't act on it?
Again, again, to be reconsidered.
No, we already reconsidered.
You know, the, the language to be reconsidered.
No, the discussion is not over. No, it's not. No, Mark, we need, need to come back to it, I have a question.
So, so what we're, so what we're technically doing is clearing, clearing, clearing out and start.
Technically, we never had a conversation on.
We never voted.
All right, so is there a second on that motion?
I second. Yeah, it was, um, Tom who motioned, Abdullah seconded and he now.
Commissioner Gardett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hozier?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Gonzalez?
Yes. Because he was asked for a vote. Commissioner Marshall Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Odella?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Eaton?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Madam Chair, passes your name. Dahee, I'm sorry.
Dahee asked?
No, no, I'm saying no.
I make a motion to gather our, our city council. And I make a motion to.
Um, Tom, I second.
You can't be laid on. That's what happens when somebody's.